I'm going to call to order the September 9, 2025 City Council meeting. Let's start off with invocation and Pledge of Allegiance, and I'll leave that. Please stand with me.
Stay with me.
Lord, thank you. Thank you for this beautiful place that you let us live. Thank you for this town, people. Please watch over the two families who are still waiting for word for their lost ones. Please watch over all who search every day. Thank you for all our first responders, all our city crews, our county crews, crews from around the world that came to help. Thank you for the rain this weekend. Thank you for a place where we can come together and talk about our community, its issues, its problems, and its hopes. Thank you for the men and women who served with me on this council, who do it out of a love for their community. Much over us tonight. Give us strength and wisdom, peace and honor. In your holy name I pray. Amen.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to cry in the United States of America, and to the republic always stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Glad you all are here tonight. A nice full house. Let's start with community interests. Mr. Cunyess.
Mayor, we have two quick announcements tonight, and one of them we have talked about at the last two meetings in a row, but there's still two days before the sign up ends. So if you want to participate this Saturday in the basketball knockout competition, you have two more days to sign up. So wanted to bring that up one more time. That'll be September 13th, this Saturday at Carver Park, and we're hoping for a really good turnout out there. So if you don't sign up, come out and watch some basketball. One new announcement, I can't believe we're already getting to this, but it's actually a little over two months away, but we are starting to take applications now for the float entries for the 24th Annual Holiday Lighted Parade. And that's going to be Saturday, November 22nd, 6:00 PM, downtown Kerrville, fun event every year. We're going to have 96 floats this year. Registration will close on Wednesday, November 5th. It seems like a long way off, but those float applications fill up pretty quickly. So 96, if you're interested in that, get in touch with the Parks and Rec Department. One more announcement, actually, I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Sickerman because he has the latest on this.
Okay. We are very proud to announce that we received the Texas, Kerrville, Texas Cultural District designation. And this video you're going to see in just a few minutes will explain why we, part of the reason we received this district designation. So, Martin?
Kerrville is 65 miles west of San Antonio and 500 miles east of El Paso. The city is directly adjacent to Interstate 10 and refers to itself as the heart of the hill country. In an area 30 miles around Kerrville, there are a number of communities that attract large numbers of tourists, including Comfort, Bernie, Bandera, and Fredericksburg. And to the west, numerous summer camps and nature resorts. But tourism has played a smaller role here. The city extends into the surrounding hills and to the bottom lands surrounding the Guadalupe River, which is extraordinarily beautiful. The Kerrville Folk Festival is nationally famous and takes place for three weeks every spring. Shrinery University has a beautiful campus and also has a unique Bear Garden Theater, which connects directly to the River Trail. This trail provides over seven miles of hiking and biking pathways and connects to the Cultural District. The Cultural District is compact and encompasses 20 city blocks. The county courthouse is the largest building in the district. In 2012, a new city hall with a clock tower was constructed, which created a distinctive landmark in the district. Water Street and Earl Garrett Street, shown here, are the focal point of a majority of our retail, restaurant, and entertainment activities. The Farmer Post Office is now an art and cultural center that is widely recognized for the largest Texas furniture maker show, an annual plane air competition, and multiple exhibits and programs. In the middle of the district is this Romanesque mansion, which was built by merchant and banker Charles Schreiner in 1875. Twenty years ago, the district was largely devoid of activity, but today, almost every property is occupied, and there has been a strong effort of historic preservation. There is one large art gallery that also has a framing business, and there is an art school that offers a wide range of painting and life drawing courses. The district has 11 dining locations, and most take advantage of the pleasant outdoor climate. A recent new addition is a charming bakery. A farmer's market recently opened that includes live music presented from a deck overlooking the river. The restoration of the Arcadia Theater has added a vibrant center of activity. It has a deck overlooking the river and is multifunctional. Shown in performance are the Blind Boys of Alabama. The district has a beautiful contemporary 800-seat performing arts hall called the Calo Theater, where major artists perform. The VK Garage is a highly active community theater. We have a stunning library in the district. And very close by is our nature center. Under construction is the heart of the hill's Heritage Center, being developed in a former mansion. On the left is Angela Kennedy, the Heritage Center Director, and next to her, Catherine Boyett, Community Arts Program Director, who manages a wide range of arts and cultural programs. Catherine has overseen numerous mural projects, has helped organize outdoor festivals, and brought in artists from around the country. Our district committee is the City of Kerrville Main Street Advisory Board, shown here with City Planning Director Drew Paxton, in one of many planning sessions. Since 2018, Kerrville has been evolving our 2050 Plan, a significant portion of which is committed to the Cultural District. It is periodically reviewed with intensive dialogue across the community. A major issue is finding more properties to expand our thriving core area. Shown here is the Presbyterian Church, which is a space that has recently become available. Our large civic plaza is an area we feel could have a much richer range of activity. Parking is a challenge, but we have an enormous public parking garage that we are working to make more accessible and attractive. One local resident expressed the sentiment shared by everyone in our community, that we love being here, and we would like you to visit us in one of the most hospitable
Armando actually helped us produce this video from Schreiner, so.
Thank you.
And Howard Taylor would like to say a few words.
Well, you may be wondering who I am. I'm not so sure. I'm actually Chair of the Main Street Program. And this is a very exciting announcement with very good news for this community in a time of stress and challenge. I won't get into the details, but at a later date, perhaps, I can come back and tell you more about this and I think the very significant assets that it will add to the community. Again, I want to say Armando, who's at Shrinery University, helped us put this video together, did a beautiful job. Thank you so much. I don't know if Catherine Boyett is here anywhere, but there she is. Where are you, Catherine? Oh, there you are. And Catherine knows the arts of this community backwards and forwards, and the application process that we went through was very grueling, very intensive about the arts and culture of our community, and we really couldn't have done it without her. And by the way, the voice in the video, we thought of getting someone from Hollywood, but then we thought, well, Delane, how about it? And she did a beautiful job, I think.
It was free.
Big round of applause. Thank you, Delane. Okay, just a couple points. There are no cost or requirements for the city to participate. There are opportunities for significant grants in the future going forward and matching grants. And in my previous life in San Angelo, where I chaired the program there, we raised over $600,000 to this program that was matched considerably more than that. A core goal of this program is to help increase tourism and the financial well-being of our community, as well as adding to the quality of life. A lot of other things I could say, but I just want to leave you with this simple message. I've worked with over 40 communities across Texas very intensely in community development, and moved to Kerrville just under three years ago and discovered something absolutely unique. I know of no other place in this state and practically around the country that in such a concentrated area has such a richness of cultural activity that I think can be a hallmark of our community going forward. So this program is going to be one of the things that I think we will use to really bring to the forefront the extraordinary quality and inventiveness of this community. So that's my brief message, and thank you so much, and thank all the people who helped put this together.
Thank you very much.
All right. Any other announcements of community interests, Delane?
Well, the festival was one of the requirements to maybe apply for the first grant that we get to do so with this Texas Cultural District designation, and guess what? We already have one planned. So October 25th, the Water Street Festival will happen downtown, the streets Earl Garrett and Water, some of which will be closed, and we'll have food vendors, and it gives the restaurants a chance to kind of bump out and showcase what they do. We'll have artists, we'll have four musicians stationed around, and best of all, we have our kids parade at 11 o'clock that will come down Water Street, similar to the Holiday Lighted Parade, and take a ride on Earl Garrett and end at the KACC for a lot of kids activities. So should be a lot of fun. It's a great family day. Come gather with your Kerrville citizens, and let's celebrate how we've come through all of this. Can't hear. Can't hear? Okay, well, I've never had that problem before. Can't hear now?
The lines aren't transmitting.
Oh, darn. I wish I had known that, and then I would have.
We start over.
I'll use sign language to just bring you up to speed. Can you hear me now? Nope. He's working on it. Okay. Well, that's good that we know now.
Let's go with Jeff, and we'll come back to you if we need.
I'm good.
I don't need a microphone, so on Thursday, I would like to personally invite the community to come to Shrinery University at 5:00 at the Trailhead. Lieutenant General Mike Oats, this is going to be the second one that he's put together. It's the Walk to Honor and Remember. It's going to start at 5:00. We've got some great speakers that are going to be there, and after the ceremony's over, we're going to be able to walk the campus and remember and see the faces of those who paid the ultimate sacrifice for our freedom, five of which are from Kerrville. And Jacob Light, who was a personal friend of mine, is one of those. So it's a great way to go out and remember and, you know, just to honor those that served our country after 9/11. The second one I want to say is, you highlighted the Calo Theater. Somewhere I had it move. There it is. October 25th is going to be Spirit of Scotland, and that's going to be the first event for Playhouse 2000. So it's supposed to be a pretty interesting night. It's going to be the first event that they've hosted. Playhouse 2000 is hosted. It's the first event for the Scottish dancers and bagpipers that are going to be here, and I believe they're only showing up in five cities in the United States, and we're one of. So October 25th, if y'all want to come partake of a little bit of that.
It's going to be a busy day.
Yes. Is that true?
Yeah.
So I brought up one previous meeting about the legislature working on capping their property tax rates, and it was in 2019, they capped them at 3.5%. Discussion this year to go 2.5% or lower, and the good news is that didn't happen. But it's something we have been dealing with for some time because the cap at 3.5% since 2019 hasn't helped us to cover inflation, so it's been putting some pressure on the budget. And I'm not sure what's driving the legislature to do that, but it's something we'll be fighting again, but that 3.5% is important for all cities. And so anyway, we dodged a bullet. I think that it appeared that they bogged down really, they couldn't decide how to cut it. There was some finding edges that saved us from passing that, but it is part of our budget issues we talk about later. It's a good thing it didn't happen. Keep that in mind, the next legislature, we need to do what we can to make sure that doesn't happen.
And?
Yeah, I just want to remind the community about the free, the event is called Kerrville or KPA, Kerrville Pets Alive Gives Back, and you can register your pet on Saturday if you need free spay neuter surgery. The event itself is going to be at 333 Earl Garrett Street, which is where the Red Cross Building is, and from 8:00 to 12:00, they will be providing free pet vaccinations, flea and tick prevention, pet tags, microchips, pet food, pet supplies, nail trims. There'll be kids crafts and shaved eyes on site. It's over $500 in value per pet, and you can sign up at that time for an October clinic that we're having for spay neuter. So come on out and get your animals taken care of.
I don't think we have any other announcements. While we have some presentations, I'm going to go to the front. Ladies and D.A.R., if you can join me down there for a Constitution. All right, I'm going to read the proclamation, and then while I do this, I ask that you make a comment or say who you are and how long you've been at D.A.R., but also a comment about a special year. All right? Let's start. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, was adopted September 17, 1787, and stands as the oldest written national constitution still in use today. And whereas the Constitution established a unique system of government that has enabled the United States to thrive in liberty and justice for over two centuries. And whereas it is fitting and proper to honor the framers of this foundational document and to reaffirm our commitment to the principles of constitutional governance. And whereas public awareness and understanding of the Constitution are vital to the preservation of our democratic republic and the freedoms we cherish. And whereas the Daughters of the American Revolution, through its chapters across the nation and in this community, have been staunch advocates for the celebration and education of Constitutional meetings since its official recognition by Congress in 1956. And whereas the Major James Kerr Chapter of the National Society of Daughters of the American Revolution continues to promote patriotism, historic preservation, and the study of the Constitution through its annual observance of Constitutional meetings. Now therefore, be resolved by the Kerrville City Council that September 17 through 23rd, 2025, is Constitutional Meeting in the City of Kerrville. I signed the document. So thank you, Contra. Congratulations. Thank you very much. You can do yourself, and I say a few words, please.
Absolutely. My name is Dawn Column, and I am the Chapter Regent for the Major James Kerr Chapter here in Kerrville. We are 192 members strong, and that's just our chapter. And we want to make sure that our community learns about the American Revolution and the Texas contribution to the American Revolution. And I think we're going to have some help in the community doing that over the next few years. We look forward to that.
Thank you.
I'm Lisa Williams. I've been in D.A.R. for 17 years, and I'm a Deputy Director, Assistant Director, BA. I volunteer as a veteran as a BA.
Thank you.
And I've been a member of D.A.R. since 2014, and have been able to be an officer at some point, but now I'd love to just be a member of our chapter. And the best thing about our chapter is we are a big family and come together and volunteer in everything imaginable here in Kerrville. We do not pat ourselves on the back. We are here to do the service.
What was your name?
Gina Ireland.
I'm Stacy Cannon. I have been a part of D.I.A.R. for about a year and a half. My daughter and I joined at the same time. She's a student at UT right now. And, you know, I wish I was able to do more. I do work, but, you know, I just try to participate when I can and support the chapter and the community.
My name is Nancy Foster. My patriot is Jeremiah Staniford from Ypsilanti, Massachusetts, who was one of the Minutemen. So this means a lot to me, and I'm working with the D.A.R. and the community for an initiative next year that's called Kerr 250. It's part of the Nationwide America 250 to celebrate the semi-quintcentennial of the United States. So you'll be hearing more about that probably towards the end of the year.
And then we'll be able to say semi-quintcentennial. I didn't. The nation is 250 years old, so that's a big celebration. I know you're already working on it. All right, so let's get some pictures, and then thank you for being with us tonight.
Thank you so much.
Who's going to be with me on Recovery Month this week? Anybody else?
I don't.
I'm here. Thank you.
All right. This is another proclamation of the City of Kerrville. Whereas through Recovery Month, we work to promote evidence-based treatment and recovery practices, the emergence of a strong and proud recovery community, and the dedication of service providers and citizens across our community who make recovery in all its forms possible. And whereas prevention of mental and substance abuse disorder works, treatment is effective, and people can and do recover in our area and around the nation. And whereas we must encourage relatives and friends of people with mental and substance use disorders to implement preventive measures, recognize the signs of a problem, and guide those in need to appropriate treatment and recovery support services. And whereas the National Recovery Month theme, every person, every family, every community, reminds people in recovery and those who support them that no one is alone in the journey through recovery. Everyone's journey is different, but we are all in this together. Recovery Month will continue to educate others about substance use disorders and co-occurring disorders, the effectiveness of treatment and recovery services, and that recovery is possible. All of us, from celebrities and sports figures to our coworkers, neighbors, friends, and family members, throughout our lives have experienced peaks and valleys, both big and small. With the strength, support, and hope from the people we love, we are resilient. Whereas Kerrville Recovery Community Coalition invites all residents of Kerrville to participate in National Recovery Month. Now, therefore, I, Jorin Junior, Mayor of the City of Kerrville, Texas, do hereby proclaim September 2025 as Recovery Month. Congratulations.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you very much. Please.
My name is Randy Benno, and I'm the Chairperson for the Kerrville Recovery Coalition. I also am the Director of Peer Support for Hill Country, MHDV.
I'm also a person with long-term recovery. I've been clean since June 10, 1987. I've always been of service in my recovery, that anybody can recover. If I can, anybody can. I know a lot of people that felt hopeless but have found hope, and anybody can do that. So I'm proud to be a resident of Hunt and a member of the Coalition.
And thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Let's get a picture.
Thank you. Good to see you always.
Next, we have visitors and citizens. Do any of you sign up to speak?
Yes, sir, we do have five. John Sawyer and Martha Stensing.
Come on up. If you wouldn't mind stating your name and the city you live in, for the record.
Yes, sir. John Sawyer, Kerrville, Texas, and I'm here this evening on behalf of Christian Women's Job Corps. Sorry, I'm looking at my notes here.
That's good.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers, for having me here tonight. Thank you for everybody who is in attendance. I'm here, joined by Martha Stensing, one of the other board members with the Christian Women's Job Corps, and just wanted to invite everybody to the 25th anniversary for the Christian Women's Job Corps, which is going to be held Thursday, September 25th, from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. And I just have a brief statement, if I may. For 25 years, this community has stood with Christian Women's Job Corps transforming lives one woman at a time. Now they invite you to celebrate with them on the date of Thursday, 25th of September, from 4:00 to 6:00 PM, for an open house and anniversary with a special dedication at 6:00 PM. Fun, casual, self-guided tour of the building and to see firsthand how hope becomes a future. Since 2000, the Christian Women's Job Corps has provided women in need a safe, Christ-centered environment to spiritually grow, as well as professionally and personally, all at no cost, thanks to generosity and donors and a lot of other folks. So I just wanted to point out a couple key statistics. Between 2000 and 2025, Christian Women's Job Corps has graduated 535 women, 95% of which have found employment or have adopted continued education. 432 of them have accepted Christ or redirected their lives to Him. And since 2004, 351 women have been baptized. I've been honored to be on the board for seven years now, and it has been really a life-changing experience for me, just being able to see that the work that CWJC does on a daily basis. We are largely volunteer-based, with the exception of two full-time and one part-time staff. So the work is really life-changing, not just for the women in particular, but also the generational impact that it has on the children and their other family members. So we invite you to please come out for the open house on September 25th from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. We'd love to see you there, and that's all I have.
Where's the address?
Oh, thank you.
Well, we were listening.
I'm sure that was somewhere in here. I know, I should know it.
1140 Broadway.
Thank you. 1140 Broadway, which is next to the, what is that?
BCSF.
Thank you. BCSF. I always get the acronym wrong, so. And it's right across from Mike's house, St. Vincent de Paul in that area up there. So please come out. We'd love to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you. 535 women have been helped through that program. What a wonderful success story.
Melissa Machen.
Hi.
Hello. I'm Melissa Machen. I live on Bear Creek Road in Kerrville, Texas, and I have two concerns. When is the River Walk going to be open? I'm an avid walker. I miss it terribly. So when will it be available? And the second most important one is the Bear Creek Road Bridge over the Guadalupe River.
Right.
What's the plan? Is it going to be repaired again, or is it going to be replaced? When does it start? When, you know, what can we see about this bridge situation?
I can answer one. I emailed the county judge this week to find out what the status of that was, and I haven't heard back, so I don't know about the bridge. As for the River Walk, my wife asks me that every morning, and I don't have a good answer. I don't have a good answer for that either. The River Trail will be reopened when it's safe for people to go there. There's still a lot of heavy equipment going up and down, and there's still some places where the water or out underneath the sidewalk, so there's some repairs that have to be made. What I'm hoping will happen is we have an equivalent of a build a park in a day where people can go out and help. But we've got to get the big equipment out of the way first. So I'm not trying to not answer the bridge, but I don't know the answer to that question.
Who does?
It's a county project.
No, 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 no. It's in the city limits.
It is.
It is in the city limits.
Until it goes across the river. Until it goes across the river.
At the end of the bridge.
That's what they're telling you.
Maybe he can help us.
Somebody help me.
I mean, I want to know as bad as you do.
Yeah. The end of the bridge is city limits. We've had this problem for years and years.
Did our side break or did their side break?
Your side broke.
That's wrong.
Yes. The city side broke.
Mr. Hornis, Mr. Hornis.
So what's going to happen?
So it's true, the city side did break. So initially, no, it was the whole, yeah. The.
The whole bridge is broken.
So this is a kind of a long, drawn-out process, but essentially, there's two phases to it. There's one, which is a temporary bridge, essentially would be put out that just almost looks like one of those military bridges that you would see over a river. And that's the first kind of phase of that, and we're working on that answer. But it's going through, it's a project that goes through both the state and the federal government, so it's going to take a minute. And then the final disposition, the final project, will either be a rebuilding of it as it is, or if it's, if the cost of that rebuilding is more than 50% of the cost of new construction, then FEMA will require that it be a newly constructed bridge. Does that make sense?
Higher bridge?
Well, that's all the question, right? So I don't have that answer for you, ma'am, but temporarily, it's, that's the first phase. When is that going to happen? We're waiting on word from the federal government at this time.
I know you have federal, you have federal grants or federal money for that bridge, I was told.
So the way all that works, it's called public assistance projects, and FEMA will pay up to 75% of those projects, and then the remaining 25% is the responsibility of the owners. So yes, we do have federal funds available for that project.
So do I keep calling every month to see what's going on?
You can absolutely do that.
Please do.
You can call for me. I'll give you my cell phone number.
Okay, good.
I think I've given it out a thousand times in the last.
Thank you. Thank you for the question. You're not the only one asking.
Thank you.
I thought we were supposed to call the county judge. I'm glad you were here tonight. Thank you. Who's next?
Michaela Taylor.
Michaela?
Hi, I'm Michaela Taylor, Kerrville, Texas.
Good.
I'd like to address the Kerrville City Council on corruption and sexual abuse of power by a former member of the Kerrville Police Department. On January 31st, 2025, a false police report was made against me by Justin McClure, who stole and is still in possession of my business's social media accounts. He called and alleged harassment, which was completely unfounded, but that's not why I'm here.
Is that, is this the best forum for that?
Absolutely.
In my opinion, it's not.
Well, on March 4th, I started receiving text messages from an investigator from the Kerrville Police Department, asking me to promote his police association. As I always do with any nonprofit, and as a supporter of our local police, I said absolutely. I asked him if he would like to meet for lunch and discuss it, and he was adamant about coming to my apartment. I knew about this investigation because I had seen the police record with the call to Jam Broadcasting's address where Justin McClure is the primary owner. As Larry as I was.
Michaela, I don't, I don't think this is the appropriate venue for this.
When I reached out to that man, he would not respond to me. When I reached out to you, you would not respond to me.
I don't.
When I reached out to her.
Michaela, I don't, I don't remember you reaching out to me. I'm sorry.
When I reached out to him, Dalton Rice, the city manager, he would not respond to me.
I don't remember you reaching out to me.
Yeah, I don't remember you reaching out to me.
I sent an email yesterday morning. Did you not receive the email?
I have not received anything from you, Michaela. I've received nothing.
With the 140 screenshots of text messages?
I have not received anything from you.
Between Kerrville Police Department investigator Ed Holloway and myself?
Nope.
You have not seen those screenshots?
No, ma'am.
This is, this is not the venue.
You have not seen the, I covered them up, he didn't. But you have not seen the pictures of the public regions from this man?
I'm going to speak now, and I want you to know, this isn't the venue. I'm happy to meet with you outside of the council, even tomorrow if you want to, but this is not the venue for this complaint.
What is the venue? What is it?
I'm happy to meet with you tomorrow. I will, I'll be happy to meet with you tomorrow, but this is not the venue for this.
I'm here not for myself. I'm here for every woman, and I'm here for every mom.
Okay.
And I'm here, there was another victim in Gillespie County, and that's why I'm here, because that established.
Let's talk about it tomorrow. I promise I will talk with you tomorrow, but this is not the venue.
But I need to finish what I'm saying. This is extremely important.
I can actually ask you to leave.
You can ask me to leave. On his GoFundMe, his wife's GoFundMe account, she said that this has been going on for years.
This is not the venue.
Paraphrasing.
This is not the venue.
If there have been two victims since March.
I just want you to know.
If there have been two victims since March, and this has been going on for years.
This is not the venue. I'm going to ask you to leave. I'm going to ask you to leave.
Okay.
But I, just email me?
Censor me.
And I will. I'll talk to you, okay? All right. Who's next?
Ian Dougherty.
All right. Well, good evening. Excuse me. One of you heard unlike earlier. Anyway, good evening. My name is Ian Dougherty, and I live with my wife at the Lakeside Apartments. I introduce myself this way because some would say raising property taxes won't matter to me because I rent, and I'm not a homeowner yet. It does. Complex gets their ra, gets theirs raised, and then it's passed on to me and my wife through higher rent.
Ian, Ian, we have a, we have a, we have an agenda item about the tax rate. Do you want to talk about the tax rate?
This is an open meeting act.
Yes, it is, and it says.
So I do need to continue.
It says, it says, with business not scheduled, on the agenda may speak. I would like you to speak at that part of the agenda.
So you're, you're doing it again and censoring another person, especially someone who got in here from Camp Honey Creek, being able to clean up everything.
I would like to hear what you're saying, but I want to hear it under the appropriate agenda item. Is that okay?
No, it's not, because I have the right to speak about what I'm talking about right now.
Not really.
I don't.
But I will listen to you at the appropriate agenda item, okay?
But it's not signed up for the appropriate agenda item, so you can go ahead and tell me, sorry.
All right. I'm going to tell you sorry, but I'll listen to you in a little bit, okay? Who's next?
Wow.
That's the of the citizen speakers.
Good. That was a good start. All right. The next item is the consent agenda. These items are considered routine and can be approved in one motion unless a council member, staff, or member of the public asks for separate consideration of an item. Does any council member wish to move anything?
I can make a motion to approve the consent agenda items 4A, B, and C.
Second. All right. The motion's been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Can you hear me?
No.
That's perfect. No. I don't know why. It's working. This is kind of in the way. I'm leaning forward for you. I am leaning forward for you. All right. We have a motion to second on the consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, so vote, and it passes 5 to 0. The next item is item 5A.
5A is only a public notice, sir, that had to be placed on the agenda. Citizen Speaker signed up. However, this is a public hearing.
All right. Thank you. Who, will we start with you, Ms. Barron? All right, Ms. Barron.
There we go. So we have both ordinances before you tonight, and I know we've had a lot of discussion in a couple hours, that we went over the budget in detail back in August, and then several workshops that we talked about it, and then again at our 4 o'clock today. So I'll just highlight the large things and then answer any questions that you might have. So citywide, our budget is 102 million, 298, and that does include transfers between funds. So net of those transfers, revenues are about 79 million, expenditures right at 118 million, and the net of the transfers again is 94 million. And the reason, and we talk about this a lot, that it's important to exclude the transfers is that a transfer into one fund is revenue of that fund and expense of another. So that's not actual cash money. It's just money between, moving between funds, as is required by the government accounting standards boards and other, and other laws that we are governed by. So it's normal for a citywide budget to have expenses higher than revenues. We'll receive revenues in one year for large capital projects that go on for multiple years, and so those expenses will come after. So the revenue is recognized when the revenue is received, and then expenses go on until the life of the project is completed. So by policy, both the general fund and the water fund are balanced. So I'm happy to answer any questions on any of the workshop items or previous discussions that we've had regarding the budget itself. The property tax rate will follow this. Budget is required first, and there are some definite, very, very specific motions within the law, so that we put them up there so that we make sure the motions are correct. But in the meantime, happy to listen to the citizen speakers as well as answer questions unless Dalton has anything to add to that.
Mr. Rice.
Mayor, Council, if you would like, I can kind of go through the CRAN and the Big Chief Pad version that I did in the workshop. So when we kind of talk through the budget, obviously, we are falling in line with state statutes, which requires the budget to be adopted first. We did build this budget off of the 3.5% voter approval tax rate, which is the highest tax rate that prior to triggering an election, based off of a council member McKinney was saying that the 86 legislation in 2019, Senate Bill 2 established that tax cap or tax rate cap. So in this, in this budget, obviously, it is balanced. There is a lot of uncertainties within this budget. While there are some things that we did factor in of the uncertainties within the budget, it did not impact, you know, the overall budget as far as directly with the departments and with, with, with some of the public assistance side, which I'll discuss here in a second. And so as we look at the disaster tax rate and kind of dive into that, which will be the next one, but all of this obviously plays in, per the state law, y'all have to adopt the budget first. Regardless of what the tax rate is going to be, y'all chose to explore what an 8% tax rate would look. However, we still built the budget off of a 3.5% tax rate. Reason why we did that is we wanted to look at all the different options with the disaster tax rate. That was not going to have necessarily a direct impact, or could have a direct impact on the M and O budget, but there's a lot of uncertainties because the disaster happened in July. We get our certified tax rolls July 25th typically. Protests were already late. Normally, those happen mid-May. Those did not happen until probably end of May or in June, and that takes a lot of time. During this devastating event, we have an estimated $65 million worth of lost value. We did add $71 million of new value to the tax rolls. So we did increase a little bit, but again, there's still uncertain. People have until October 20th, I believe, to file their disaster exemption, so that that number could go up. Even though we built the budget on the 3.5% tax rate, if that 65 million does exceed $71 million, then we are truly at that point tapping into the general fund budget, which would impact, you know, could or may impact some operations or services until we navigate, you know, navigate those. The other thing that we, we did not factor into the budget, but it is obviously something real, as we start diving into public assistance dollars or reimbursements from FEMA, as Michael Hornis had kind of talked about, you know, regarding the Bear Creek Bridge and all the many other projects, we are going to be responsible for 25% of that. And so we did not factor in what we anticipated 25% match to be within that. There's a lot of variables in there. You could use in-kind, you can use volunteers, so we're working and navigating all of, all of that, but that is also not factored in. And so there is an unknown number that we are going to come out with that we have no clue of what that looks like. And so we built the budget at 3.5%, knowing that there's a lot of uncertainties. Should council on the next one go into the 8%, that would be able to be used to offset it, but we can talk about more after that. So just wanted to give some highlights on where we came up with the budget and why we came up with the budget that we did.
Before we get to the public hearing, do we have any questions for Mr. Rice or Ms. Barron?
Simple one. Okay, so October 18th, well, actually, the 20th is the cutoff.
Yes, ma'am.
How long after that would we know?
Andrew.
Oh, so October 20th is the cutoff, but how long after that? That's the soon we get all the exemptions done by then. Would we know sometime in November what our new loss property values are, or?
Maybe we have some deferred, you know, so difference between deferred and cuts, right? Defers, we're just moving, moving it down the road. We have about probably half a million or more that we could defer in the budget if we needed to, to address some of those uncertainties. We're hoping to know by December, but we, we have a plan for either the next 90 days or the next even six months as we kind of figure out what's going on.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
So during the workshop that we just finished a little while ago, we talked about, we're not maintaining enough money in the budget to sustain ourselves as far as asset replacement and, and other items. So we're really, even without the unknown of the, of the disaster expenses we may end up with, we are not setting aside enough money to function over time, to be, to sustain our operations, really. So we need to just kind of remember that, well, we've got the budget and we sort of balance, but it's not covering all the, we're sacrificing street repair money, we're sacrificing asset replacement money and other things that really we don't want to have to sacrifice.
Yes, sir.
So everybody should think it, this is not a, like a, really a fully funded budget.
Yes, sir. Every, every little bit counts, and really just kind of the best CRAN drawing I can do of a general fund budget is most of it's sales tax, which again, the only way you can increase sales tax is either through new development or people spending money. So it's a more, you know, economy-driving, you know, thing. We're growing about 1.3%, so, and we added 71 million in new value, which is, you know, good, but that's not a lot. Then you have the property tax piece, which obviously gets complicated. The state does not help with, you know, with that, with the 3.5% cap. You know, they were trying to address some of that again with this legislative session. And so we are, we are, over the next year, we're putting together a local resilience committee to kind of address some of these issues with, you know, kind of a citizen-led advisory group, if you will, to start addressing some of these challenges and how we can get creative on making sure that future budgets, we continue to chip away at this to make sure that we have a sustainable, sustainable budget going into the future.
You mentioned the sales tax, sales taxes as being a significant part. If we do inflation-adjusted sales taxes between 22 and 25, we're a million, 350 less.
Yes, sir.
Than we were. So actually, our sales tax revenue is going down in the meantime. Not only are we fighting the property tax problem, but our sales tax revenue.
We actually budgeted 3% lower on the sales tax last year, on the last year's budget, and, you know, we're pretty much on target with that. We're only doing a half a cent increase in that, and the only reason why we're doing a half, sorry, half a percent increase on that, and that's factoring in some new developments that are going to be potentially, are coming in, that we do anticipate will have some driving force in that.
Yeah. Mr. Harris?
Just for clarification, because in our packet that's available to everybody, it says, under the summary, proposed tax rate is .5711. That is the 8%.
Correct.
But our budget is balanced right, or right now, it's proposed at the 3.5%, not taking into the 8% M and O for the disaster, correct?
Correct, yes, sir.
So all these numbers are off 3.5%. It's a little confusing, because when I saw it, and I want to make sure everybody that's here tonight knows it, because if you read it, it looks like we're fixing to pass a budget based on 8%.
Great point. So thank you, council member, on that one. So yes, by state law, y'all have to adopt a budget prior to adopting a tax rate. It's a weird nuance, because why would you adopt a budget based off of a tax rate that you have yet decided? But that's what the state says, and that's what they, they know it's best. So yes, you, you will be adopting a budget based off of a 3.5% tax rate. rate. If council decides to choose the eight percent on, on a future agenda, or another agenda item, that delta, or the three-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand dollars-ish, because that's going to, we built some conservative numbers into it. So, normally, we collect at ninety-nine percent. We bumped that down to about ninety-seven and a half percent. So, we, we have a little bit of some conservative fiscal stewardship in there, just in case. But yes, sir, it is, the budget that y'all are adopting, if you choose to adopt it, is at three-and-a-half percent. If y'all choose the tax rate at eight, that will add another three-hundred-and-thirty-six-ish thousand dollars to the budget, which would come back as a budget amendment that we can use for whatever we feel is necessary for disaster or other stuff. We just don't recommend using it for recurring costs.
So, the other thing that we discussed at the workshop was that, that five-million-dollar insurance policy, and insurance policy, the insurance company did not contest or really push the pencil or negotiate or anything. It was clear that we lost a lot more than five million dollars.
Yes, sir. So, our.
And so, so, three-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand is not going to even put a dent into, into probably what we, what our losses were.
No, sir. And we have no clue what that's going to be. Really, really, the disaster tax rate, by, by design, is to, as best as it can, offset any maintenance and operations within the general fund. So, a great example is if that loss of value of sixty-five million, you know, goes over seventy-one in this case, or even just offsetting that sixty-five million dollars of lost value, that is what it was designed for, because that disaster tax rate falls off either after three years, or as lost value comes, comes back onto the tax roll, whichever comes first. That's what the disaster tax rate is designed to do.
So, the disaster tax rate is not a permanent increase. It, by law, has to go away within either three years or a return of value.
Yes, sir. I know we're diving into the other agenda, but it's all obviously tied together. But, yes, sir. So, if council decides to go with the disaster tax rate on the other agenda item, this would not change the, change the tax rate to a new or higher, no new revenue tax rate in the future years. As soon as the disaster tax rate falls off, either on the return of lost value, or the return of value, or three years, whichever comes first, it would go back to the original no-new-revenue tax rate going into this year. It does not change the, the tax rate like it would on a voter-approved tax rate.
It would stay point five-seven-one-one until the end of three years?
Oh, no. Every single year, we have to go back and reevaluate it.
Okay.
So, it doesn't, it will not stay for three, this does not stay for, this, yes, every single year, we will go through the same exercise if council chooses to go down that road.
Any other comments before I open the public hearing? Any other questions?
Well, so, if we have, seems to me that we'll have some more expense than, it's not in the budget for the disaster particularly. So, that's.
Yes, sir.
So, reserves will, will come into play. It's not like we're going to be able to pay all the bills without dipping into the reserves more.
Correct. Because even that twenty-five percent reimbursement that we would get from public, or, sorry, that we would have to match for the PA, that's upfront cost. And so, that's going to have to come out, and then we have to figure out what that looks like as far as the reimbursement side, have a volunteer side, all the paperwork that comes in. So, there's, it's a long process on the reimbursement side. So, yes, sir, we, we anticipate having to dip into the fund balance to be able to cover some of the disaster-related expenses.
Any other questions before I open the public hearing? All right. I'm going to open a public hearing. What that means is if you've signed up to speak, we're going to call your name, but you don't have to have signed up to speak. It's a public hearing. Anyone can speak. And we want to hear everyone's views. We do. It's, it's something that we five have been working on, actually, since before the flood, but after the flood, it changed, it changed everything. So, what I would like to do, if it's okay, I'll open the public hearing. We'll call on those who've signed up, but after those speakers have spoken, you're free to come up and speak. You don't have to have signed up. So, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing at six fifty-five. Who's our first speaker?
Susan Doninger.
If you would mind saying your name and the town you live in, for the record.
Susan Doninger, River Hills, Kerrville. Heavens to Betsy, it is complex. But I was just listening to this gentleman say, "The state knows best." And I just was reading today where Governor Abbott said he doesn't want little towns raising their, using their disaster tax rate things. And then I looked into it a little more, and I, they were saying that our recovery and a lot of our disposal expenses, et cetera, are being covered by the state. And then I was looking at the, the community fund, foundation fund, over a hundred million has come in since July fourth. We've been able to give Shriner four-hundred-and-fifty thousand, plus another fifteen for taking pictures and keeping a log of all this. We were able to give Pets Alive a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for taking care of any animals they found loose. Animal Welfare Society of Kerrville got another hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for medical and housing needs of displaced animals. And I was just thinking, we've got a lot of money we can work with, and I'm really, we're putting in new, presumably, housing for folks who, who really don't have high incomes, and this tax rate income is going to make, rate will make a difference in those houses and for our renters around town. And I really, I was on the, I was elected to and served on the San Diego Tierra Santa City Council for two years, and we got no money. And I understand that part of what this money is going to be for is for health benefits for you folks.
No.
What?
Okay. That rumor needs to be put to sleep.
No, we don't, we're not on the health plan. Also.
But I was thinking, gee whiz.
Can I, can I talk about another rumor? The money that's been raised by the community foundation, the Texas Hill Country, we don't have any say over it. It's not something we can say, "Hey, spend it on this or this." That's a separate group.
They may raise it and say, "We would like to have this for the city council members."
Can't.
No. We can't do that.
No, they can't do that on your behalf?
No, they can't.
Oh, you can't take it.
No, they can't give it to us.
Oh, okay.
We're not a charitable, we're not a charitable purpose.
Okay.
You have to be at church, lots of, lots of charitable.
I'm glad to have that one put to it.
Well, it's just that, it's a lot of money, but it's not for, it's not for the city.
I am in Liberty in Action, and Terry Hall is very influential. And I just want to say, show her some respect, please.
I will.
Thank you. Thank you, God.
Who's next?
Jacob Wellnitz.
Jacob.
Jacob Wellnitz, Kerrville.
Perfect.
So, Mayor and Councilmembers, thank you for your time. My name is Jacob Wellnitz. While I am a recent addition to Liberty in Action Board, full disclosure, I am here today as a resident of Kerr County impacted by city policies. I do live outside the city limits on Jeffrey Scott Road, but I'm part of this community. I shop here, I do business here, and I care about Kerrville's future. Any rise in the property tax rate increases costs for everyone. When taxes go up, rents go up, businesses raise prices, families pay for more for food, gas, and daily necessities. Grocery stores embed tax increases in their prices, just as we're finally starting to see price-cut stickers in HEB. Small sign of progress and relief shows that prices are beginning to come down, and a new tax increase stalls that progress. Embedded taxes are always passed to the consumer, meaning that the burden falls on families. After years of inflation, people already struggle with higher costs. Rents are already high in Kerrville, with some apartments costing more than in Austin. This council often talks about workforce housing, but rising property taxes are pushing workers out. Service jobs, which our economy depends on here in Kerrville, do not pay high wages, and the people filling them are being squeezed out of the market. This isn't just about this fiscal year. Recovery from the July fourth flooding will be a long-term challenge. Families and businesses will be rebuilding for years to come. Building materials are already extremely expensive, such as non-O S B tongue-groove plywood is almost fifty dollars a sheet. And sales tax on those inflated prices is already bringing in more revenue. Added, adding higher property taxes on top of recovery costs makes it harder to stay, harder to reopen, and harder to grow. These costs don't just hit homeowners, they ripple throughout the entire local economy, raising the price of everything from housing to groceries. Even Kerr County Commissioners recently lowered the property tax rate after the flooding, acknowledging that flood victims should not be saddled with more taxes while they rebuild. Despite concerns about budget gaps, they chose to ease the burden on taxpayers rather than increase it. This reflects fiscal responsibility and compassion, two qualities Kerrville should follow. A city's strength isn't measured only by numbers on a budget sheet, but how it treats its citizens in times of hardship. Short-term revenue must be weighed against the long-term strength of community. Fiscal responsibility and care for your fellow citizens means making tough choices now so that Kerrville remains affordable and resilient in the future. Raising property taxes of any kind may fill a budget line today, but it risks driving away the very families and businesses that keep Kerrville alive tomorrow. I urge you to reject any increase in property taxes and stand with the people the city have been through enough, not just for this year, but for the years ahead. I say this not as representative of any organization, but as a resident of Kerr County directly impacted by the city's policies. Thank you.
Thank you.
McKenna Hall.
Mayor.
To remind people, this items is just about the budget. The next item's about the tax rate. Okay. Go ahead.
If, if you would like, you know, since it's a public hearing, and we can kind of address some of these things.
Please go ahead.
That I think are important for our residents to know. A couple of things on this, you know, there's, we talk a lot about inflationary factors on the groceries, and, and, you know, I think, you know, the cost of eggs, obviously, has gone up. Police vehicles have gone from sixty thousand dollars to a hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars. So, we are hit, we're hit with the, we're not only just hit with the inflationary factors of a lot of equipment, public safety, which, again, when you look at the general fund, over eighty percent of that is public safety, which serves our residents, you know, and provides a service within our community. And so, a hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars for a police vehicle, so our officers can, you know, control the streets and keep our streets safe, plus the fire department, you know, the increase in vehicles, that's important. Another mention was kind of talked about the county, and obviously, we're not the county, but we did balance the budget. We did not tap into the, in the fund balance by eleven or twelve million dollars to, to balance a budget. We operated within the means that we were able to operate within, under the ad valorem tax rate that we have with, under the state law.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dalton. I believe the judge was not the only one that didn't vote for that, so.
Correct. If you wouldn't mind saying your name and city, for the record.
My name's McKenna Vaxley, and I'm a resident of Kerrville here. I'm representing myself and the working class of Kerrville, and I guess technically, this would be for the next item, but I signed up under this one. I'm a twenty-three-year-old resident of Kerrville, Shriner University graduate, with a major in business finance and minor in management. I hope to own a home here in Kerrville someday and start my family here. I've been watching the recent hearings and votes on increasing property taxes, and I'm appalled by the actions of this council. For one, we're recovering from one of the biggest natural disasters in Texas history. Exploiting the rule that allows you to avoid a public vote after a disaster to increase the taxes potentially up to the eight percent is unethical and cruel to a flood-stricken community. Families have lost loved ones, many have lost their homes, and some have lost everything they own. Secondly, the citizens of Kerrville have made it clear they're opposed to tax increases, especially property tax increases. Those who support them are usually bankers, realtors, teachers, government employees, and politicians, all of which who have a direct monetary benefit when taxes are increased. Everyone else, those in retail, construction, contract labor, self-employed, the food industry, and ranchers, et cetera, are all harmed when taxes are increased. And that's the working class. Thirdly, an excuse for increasing property taxes has been the cost of flood recovery. The state is covering the most expensive cost, which is the debris removal. There are also FEMA resources, private organizations providing aid and helping rebuild, generous donations being given to the community, benefit concerts with one-hundred percent of the proceeds going to the flood, and more. As of Thursday, September fourth, the community foundation said on their website that they have over one-hundred million in, in aid for Kerr County. We have the resources, there's no excuse for raising taxes. Taking the citizens who are directly affected by this flood is backward logic and cruel. Lastly, I would like to address my attention to the unprofessional actions of our mayor, Joe Herring. There have been several posts on Facebook about a local citizen advocate, Terry Hall, who is taking the time to speak for the voiceless and expressed dissent to the proposed tax increases. Instead of listening and taking her concerns, and those she represents into consideration, he's begun a smear campaign and attempt to tarnish her reputation and encourage named calling from other elected officials. On September fourth, you posted that you were elected to do your best, and I would agree with you. You were elected to do your best for Kerrville citizens. Raising taxes is not what's best for us. I have done research on the emo correspondence you referenced in your post, and what you posted on Facebook could not be further from the truth. Terry Hall has never once called you a name or spoke unprofessionally in a manner toward you. You, on the other hand, have reverted to personal attacks and disrespectful language. That shows disdain for the concerned citizens of Kerrville, and you're trampling on us when we're down. You blatantly lied to, on a public platform to discredit her, and that's not the first time you've done it. You had another post on August fifth doing the same thing. That is defamation under Texas state law. Whether it's actionable or not, it is wrong and disgusting from an elected official. All of you on this council are elected for the people, by the, by the people, for the people. And I ask that you will stop thinking about yourselves and the plans in increasing the taxes, and consider the welfare of our city and community by not passing this tax increase. We simply cannot pay it. Thank you.
Roger Hall.
Roger. Thank you for allowing us to speak. Roger Hall Ingram, resident Liberty in Action Board member. While I'm not a resident of Kerrville, what happens in Kerrville does impact Kerr County, where I do live. Also, as a founder of LIA, it is my duty to stand for conservative principles. In this case, I must stand against the city's increased taxation. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Kerrville citizens that are working hard at their job and even multiple jobs, or even multiple days a week, full days, all the week long, Sundays, everything, just to make ends meet. Many residents of this city are not retired. They do not have the luxury of frozen property taxes. If they are even blessed to own a home, the struggle for families in this community is real, and it's the role of good governance to ease that burden. This council is taking advantage of the disaster declaration to increase the tax rate in amount that will put increased pressure on these families. Those who don't own their home will also be impacted, as it's been said. Rents will go up, other prices for goods and services will go up as, as businesses have to cover their increased rates. When funds are tight, one must cut back on expenses, not go to their neighbor and rob them. Ultimately, the immoral tax on property ownership must be abolished, not encouraged to go up. I ask you, at a minimum, to adopt the no-new-revenue rate, which is still an increase on the amount of taxes paid, since higher valuations automatically increase the taxes. There lies the rub. If you are really concerned for the citizen navigating this disaster recovery, you would have a no-new tax rate. Lastly, I must address the slander Mayor Herring has posted on his Facebook page this last week. He accused my wife of an LIA for name-calling. There has been no name-calling on our end. You can see for yourself. The full context of this interaction can be found on our website, libertyinaction.com. His Facebook post does not address the issue of out-of-control taxation, which is what her comments have always been directed to. I demand that you set the record straight on your posts and re, revoke these slanderous comments immediately. I would think these same individuals singing your praises and all your slander today will not be happy with their tax increases in January.
William Rector.
Sorry, my, my hearing is not good. William Rector, seven oh five Water Street. And just like to say that it's not just the residential properties that are impacted by raising property taxes. I have residential homes that are rental homes, also business properties that are rental. And those taxes will be going up because they're not frozen at all. There's no protection. But I'm here to say that I really commend our council. We are in a difficult time. We've had an unprecedented tragedy. We've had millions of dollars' worth of city property damaged. And I commend Jeff Harris and Kent McKinney for looking at the budget for future years and projecting where we need to be for the future. And I commend you for your bold actions, and I support you in looking at how we are going to financially bring ourselves out of this disaster. Thank you.
Terry Hall?
Yes, Hall.
Good evening. My name's Terry Hall, also on the board and one of the co-founders of Liberty in Action. Well, Mayor Herring, we finally meet in person, but I regret that you've made this property tax fight about everything except you and the council's decision to potentially max the property tax revenue calculation all the way to 8% on disaster victims. But we're going to stay laser-focused on your actions here tonight. It's no name-calling from this direction, just standing up for working families and for fiscal sanity in these extraordinary times. Can we agree on some things? I hope we can. That young people and working families are critical to the economy of Kerrville? Think you'll agree? Can we agree that they're just as important as retirees whose taxes are frozen? Can we also agree that homeownership is out of reach for most people under 40, and that property tax rates absolutely affect one's ability to afford a home here? I think we can all agree on those three important things. I never thought I'd see the day when Texans and their homes survived a near-thousand-year flood, only to face losing that home due to a steep property tax hike imposed by their own elected officials, who are supposed to be their neighbors. Yet that's what this council is likely to do to these flood victims here tonight, when families are most desperate and vulnerable, and frankly, it's heartless. Wages have not kept pace with inflation, and the skyrocketing cost of living here in Kerrville, particularly with housing. High-density stackum and maracum apartments isn't what young families want. They want homes to raise their kids in with a yard where it's safe for them to play, room to grow, raise animals, plant a garden, have a piece of the American dream. But that dream is gone in Kerrville. Over half the workers here don't live here where their jobs are. Interestingly, you chose to take aim at the last city election, using it to somehow claim that it's evidence that LIA doesn't represent the majority of city voters. But you glossed right over the primary, where party affiliation can actually be determined. And 55% of voters who voted in the city council election voted Republican in the primary last year. That's a vote to lower taxes, not to raise them. We know we're right on this issue. The governor agrees with us. And we stand with President Trump, who relentlessly fights to defend ordinary working-class citizens and put Americans first. He has put more policy in place to lower the cost of living for working-class citizens than any other president in living memory. You do well to follow their example, not thumb your nose at them or our values and exploit your citizens in time of disaster. We ask you to please adopt a no-new taxes rate. Government needs to serve the people, not have the people become the government's servant. Residents are hurting right now, struggling just to survive and rebuild their lives. Residents, um, excuse me, they've had to tighten their belts, year after year, just to survive the Biden economy. Now the flood on top of that. It's time for you to go back to the drawing board, tap reserves if necessary, seek the state and federal disaster aid that both President Trump and Governor Abbott are delivering on, and make cuts where needed to spare residents more economic pain. You can and must do better. Thanks.
We didn't hear it, I'm sorry.
Kim Clarkson?
Yeah.
Mayor, council, thank you for letting me address you. Kim Clarkson. I am a, I'm a resident. I, while I'm not young, I, I am a middle-aged taxpayer who has lived in Kerrville since 1999 and bought my first home here with my husband in 2002. We were both teachers at the time that we purchased our home. He continues to be a teacher, and I now work full-time for a small family business that my mom started working at in 1971. I have two boys. They are in high school. I have to pay more, even though I thought, once they got bigger, it, it doesn't work the way I thought it did. And I pay more for them. We have three pets, and so I would call us a working-class family. I wanted to be in Kerr. I was born here. I didn't get to choose that part, but I came back here. As a young adult, I got married here. I started my family here. My boys have gone to school here. My husband teaches at Tidy High School. I chose to be here because of the quality of life, because I wanted to live in a place that had a small-town feel, but had amenities that could serve for healthcare, quality schools, and education. And I knew, and I've learned, and I continue to learn, that in order to maintain safety, in order to have infrastructure, streets, roads, and all of the things that a city needs to have to have a quality of life and to be a safe place to live, that I have to pay taxes. I don't like going to HEB, and every time I go, year over year, I'm paying minimum of $25, but more like $50 to $75 more a visit, four times a month. I don't like that. I don't like, I don't like paying more taxes, but I don't think anybody does. I don't think any of us want to, but we have to pay for the things that we want to maintain and sustain. We've been faced with a tragic, a tragedy that none of us could have expected. It hurts all of us. My home was not damaged, but I know that our city was damaged. I know that our city is only going to be getting $5 million to make those repairs, and that's not enough. I know that we have assets that need to be replaced. We have vehicles that need to be replaced, and we have a duty, you have a duty, to make sure that our community continues to be sustainable in the future. I wish that there was another way that you could do that. I wish that there was another way that, that, that taxes didn't have to be incurred in order to maintain the services that we all want. But the reality is, things cost what they cost. Things cost more. Vehicles have to be replaced. Infrastructure has to be maintained, replaced. And it, you have the hard job of having to set a budget that allows us to do that. We don't have the luxury of not having a balanced budget. The city has to balance a budget. We, we have to present a budget that's balanced. We can't do what the county did. I wouldn't want to. I would say that's not being a responsible fiduciary of finances to say that I have to dip into my savings account to make budget. It's not sustainable. So, as a lifelong citizen of Kerrville, a taxpayer, a homeowner, with two children, two dogs, and a cat to take care of, I respectfully ask that you do what needs to be done for us to continue the quality of life and maintain the services that we need for the city that we love. Thank you.
That's the end of the citizen speakers that signed up.
This is a public hearing, so you don't have to sign up to speak. Does anybody else like to speak?
Yes, I'd like to speak.
Please, go ahead. And then I'll get you next, okay?
I'm not prepared, nor did I think I would speak. But I've been in this city for 32 years. I retired here, and I live in the city.
I know, I know who you are, but.
I'm sorry. My name is Jackie Bovee.
And you live in Kerrville. Can you live in Kerrville?
I know the mayor, I know many people here. And my question is, I think we're rushing. I think that we're rushing into this 8%. I know that the county has put it aside. I know that there are millions of dollars coming into the fund, another $3 million with the 28th on Keane's concert. And I know that, for some reason, we have to be creative. My whole career was creative. The fund, there are creative ways of doing it. You can do quality of life. That's what they're doing in Ingram. Quality of life is with the Point Theater. Quality of life are the, with the games. And quality of life are our parks. We do not have quality of life without our parks and our walkways, and that money will be able to be out of the fund of the Hill Country Foundation for us. These are monies that we can get out of there creatively. We don't have to put up our hands and say, oh, it's only fundraisers, we can't do it. There are ways to do it. And I just hate to see these wonderful, you know, officials being forced by the presence of someone who's forcing you to do 8% now. Obviously, it must have something to do with the S V 10, and when that expires, or you can't do this for so long. But we only ask you to give it enough chance. Don't rush it. Don't rush us on 8%. Don't put 8% on people that have lost their homes and other things, because, I mean, it doesn't affect me that much, but affects my heart. And I love this city, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. You're next.
Hi, my name is Sunny Moore. Thank y'all for serving. I believe that God's placed y'all here, and I pray that y'all do His will, and you honor your people that live here and voted you in. So, I'm 19 years old. I've been a resident of Kerr County since 2011. I got married last year, exactly a year and three days ago, and this is where I would love to have a family. I live inside city limits, and I just, I can't believe the devastation that we experienced and how quickly your proposed tax came. It's appalling, and I just, I don't understand it. I wish that y'all would provide more clarity, instead of especially you, Mr. Mayor, provide clarity and support and give understanding, rather than tearing people down and not allowing people to, you know, get the knowledge that they need based on, you know, you saying that it's not true. And I wish I was more prepared today, but let me go, go to my notes real fast.
Of course.
I think that there was so much I could have spoken on, but we had so many great speakers come in and say all those facts again, so I'm not gonna, you know, repeat them. But I think that y'all know what the right decision is for our people, the people of Kerrville. And like Ms. Terry Hall said, we had 50, more than 50, like, they voted to be Republican, they're Republican voters. That means no, no tax raise. And I will also just make a small comment that I don't think that y'all's behavior is very, becoming of a city council, and especially a mayor. So, thank you so much.
You, go ahead, Mr., I don't remember. Doherty.
Again, we're actually talking about the budget, but if you want to talk about the tax rate, please do.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Very nice. Now, good evening. As I said earlier, my name is Ian Doherty. I live in Kerrville. I live with my wife at Lakeside Apartments. I introduced myself this way because some would say that raising property taxes won't matter to me, because I rent, and I'm not a homeowner, yet. It does. The complex gets theirs raised, and then it's passed on to me and my wife through higher rent. My wife and I struggle as it is, and y'all deem it prudent to steal our dream of owning our own home. Shame. The flood victims have had their lives, and for some families, shredded by biblical flooding. And you act like Ebenezer Scrooge, kicking the crutch from underneath Tiny Tim and cackling viciously, then stealing that crutch. Y'all should forever be ashamed, and even consider this now. You don't need to raise taxes, because FEMA monies and/or cutting nonessential projects and discretionary spending. Or also consider delaying current, less important projects. We don't need necessarily certain things. We need to focus on the things that matter now. The people's lives that were destroyed and that will be destroyed if you raise taxes is what matters now. Not all this other stuff. It doesn't matter. You have a solemn obligation to juggle creatively to make up for this financial shortfall. Yes, we're all suffered, but not equally. While you and I didn't suffer the heartbreaking calamity of losing our homes, businesses, parents, or children, but some did, now you feel entitled to punish them again. Shame. Kerr County lowered taxes instead of raising them. I guess their hearts were bigger than their egos. Don't compile this currently on us and the people that have been affected by this flood. Don't compile the sin with more sin. I told you all before that please carefully consider what you do with this issue, because Kerrville, Texas, and the world will be watching. And we still are. What you do here today will echo in eternity. You'll forever be on the record. Fame or infamy, you choose.
I think that's all our speakers, but if anybody wants to speak, you're welcome. To, Madam, you next, then John Harrison next, then Blue Shirt next.
I'll try to be brief, because what's been in my head and my heart for weeks, months, and actually about seven years, was all expressed here. I am not a native of Kerrville. However, I have been.
I'm sorry?
My name's Mary Contois, and I live in Kerrville.
Thank you, sorry.
About 1.7 miles from here, and about 1.5 miles to 3-point miles to everything I need to have a successful retirement. I mean, everything. I also have experienced help from just about everybody in the room, so I need to reuse the word appalled. What I have heard, what I have seen, what I investigated before I even moved here, isn't matched in what I've seen the last year. And I'm not quite sure what that's about. However, I first want to thank you. My neighbors and I got together, and we counted up for you all of the mixed-use properties that were available, and you listened to us, and you did not change the zoning that surrounded our neighborhood in a precarious place. So I want to thank you for that. So that's what's given me the courage, even though my voice is shaking, to stand here and talk to you again. I did talk to county, and I, all I asked was, what I've heard here tonight was, please wait. Because you can't doesn't mean you should. I worked in healthcare for many years. I balanced many budgets. I served a lot of people, and a lot of people in need, as well as staff, staff benefits that are important and vital. And I'm talking nurses, CNAs, cooks, housekeepers, all of those folks, and I always had them in my mind. I had their names. I had their faces. Every time, I had to go through this budgeting process. Much smaller level, but there was only fewer of us, and there's five of you, and a lot of good pros that you've hired. I didn't have all that. However, we did it. And we did it year after year after year, without burdening the people in our care. We're in your care. So I just did a little bit of quick stuff before coming tonight. The growth rate for Kerrville, the last stats I saw was .78. That's 102 people, and you want to add $14 million to the budget. If you were going to use that on our existing personnel, and on our existing streets, and on rehabbing a few parks at a time, I would understand that. I watched a video, it was beautiful, well-done, well-polished, of a town that doesn't exist anymore. We want you to see the town that does. So I've been out and about. On July 4th, I was at City West in a canteen, pouring coffee, listening, watching, seeing people under umbrellas, seeing, is that my grandmother? Is that my daughter? And many of you were there with me. And you continue to be with us for 10 days straight. God, who I believe in, had me positioned to watch, listen, and talk. Do you know there are people that have lost a five-generational home? A businessperson who lost three different homes in three different floods, living in an RV behind their business so they can get their business up and running? Do you know, all this wonderful national and international, by talking to people, not sitting back here, by going out and being there, doing other stuff, I've learned these things. I've learned there was a person who was about to retire. His father started the business, he had their home on Water Street, and it's gone. So he's still working, and he was supposed to retire. He called in a businessman, they were going to charge him $175 just to evaluate his water heater, and he could not get hot water for three weeks to clean up his place. So that's the kind of vision I want you to have the next time you sit down before our second reading and look at the people you serve. Old retired ladies who did everything that, in their power, to be able to live on the 2.6% increase I get a year, and try to make that work, and already adjusting everything I have thought I would be able to do here in the past three years that haven't come to fruition, including availability of labor and service at a restaurant. It's not here. So what are we paying $40,000, $50,000 over for? Thank you for listening to me. But more than that, go out and listen to the other people, put their faces, put their stories in front of yours, before you do the next step. And just wait, we'll all be here next year.
Mayor, if I may, real quick. She brought up a really great analogy, and I want to kind of talk through some of the budgetary impacts. You know, when we talk about our $4.1 billion worth of taxable value that our tax rate applies to, a third of that is exempt. So that could be disabled vet, that could be disabled, any number of exemptions that come in. About 25% of that $4.1 billion is exempt, or, or frozen under, you know, our, the 65 and over, you know, voter-designated tax freeze for, for our seniors. Great benefit to the city, or great benefit to our, our, our senior population. That equates to about $2.4 million a year in the general fund that we less get due to those exemptions. Not going to change, but we wanted to put a dollar-figure amount, you know, on that. When we talk about .7, not sure where that number came from, it's roughly about 1.3% roughly. Either way, perspective, city of Barney is about 6%. So when we look at sales tax versus property tax, the only way we can increase it is one to either increase the tax rate, or we have new growth, because new growth does not, or new development, new value, does not tack onto it. So if we grow. grow slow, we are more in a stabilized economy, which means we feel more of that impact, even on that 3.5% tax rate. And real quick, I want to use a great analogy on the importance of public safety, and you had mentioned healthcare workers. Before I took public administration, I was on the healthcare side. May of 2020, May of 2020, right at the start of COVID, we started seeing on a national level, nurses getting furloughed. And they got furloughed because of the elected surgeries that were all put on hold. What happened, basically, within May of 2020, wasn't talked about, but federal government subsidization came into the healthcare world, because healthcare is very political. Same thing comes to our public safety and our police and fire. 80% of our general fund is personnel, 66% of that is public safety, just personnel. That's not equipment, that's not, you know, all the other things that they need to do their jobs to protect our citizens. So when she had spoken kind of about it, that's a great analogy and a great comparison of the healthcare side, when you don't have those elected surgeries, or those elected, you know, benefits, same thing. We have a service that our citizens expect us to do, and the only way that we can do that within the property, or within the general fund, is either through sales tax typically, through franchise taxes, which are some options we're looking at, or through the property tax piece. And all of those things, we are going to start looking at to improve some solutions on for the future. But I wanted to make that statement.
Mr. Harrison.
John Harrison, 2911 Dry Hollow. Is this thing on?
Yeah.
I commend you on what you're doing tonight, working on this budget. I don't like the budget. I think I've told this to you before, I'm going to tell you again tonight. I don't like the budget, because I see four city council people sitting in the audience tonight, who have, over the years, have worked on this asset replacement fund idea. And you all are not funding it. And so I don't like this budget. I don't like the budget also, because I know two city councilmen here that worked on the street repair issue, real hard, for 10 years, and you're not funding, you're not doing all the street repair you need to be doing. So I don't like this budget. I think the public safety facility leaders have asked you for more personnel for next year, and you said no. And I don't, so I don't like this budget. You know, I just don't like it. I understand why you're doing the budget. You had to balance the budget, and you're constrained, but I don't like the budget. Also, last but not least, I'll go off my soapbox. You're going to go borrow money, possibly, to buy some replacement cars for our police, which I think we need to do that. I mean, we must do that. But I don't like borrowing money to buy police cars. I think that ought to be an expense that ought to be in the budget. I know why it's not, but I don't like it. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your honesty. And, you remember, thank you. Yeah, please state your name and city for the record.
Christopher Tompkins, Kerrville. This is my first time making one of these meetings. I'm looking to buy a house here in the next couple of years, so I figured I'd get more involved in the community. And the first time I come to a meeting, I see you gloating about defeating a bill to do lower taxes. That's not something I want to hear from my representatives, gloating about not lowering taxes. What I want to hear is plans to, yes, he answered one of my initial questions. There is a time limit to this. Thank you. Because we all know how government is, you guys get tax money, you want that to keep coming. But you need to be willing to work with us on some stuff. All I see around town being built right now, more banks. Where's this stuff for the youth? I have a 16-year-old little brother, I don't want him staying in Kerrville. There's no future for him in Kerrville. There's fast food, there's bank, and then there's the VA. I work for the VA. I'm looking to get married next year. She works for the VA. I pull a disability check from my time in service. I'm sitting better off than most people, and I'm feeling the pinch. What about my little brother, who's looking to graduate high school here in a couple of years, start his future? Where's his place here in this town? Where's the place for my family that I want to start? I'm looking at not shopping for a house here in Kerrville. I'm looking to outside of Kerr County. I'm willing to drive that extra time in the morning to go to work, because it'll be cheaper. I love Kerrville. I love the parks, what they were. I hope to see them back. But seeing someone gloating about not lowering taxes and wanting to raise the taxes, that's not very in confidence inspiring. Thank you.
Anybody else? Come on up. Please, come on up. I'll get you after.
Thank you. My name, Robert Madder. I go by Bob, Caesar's remember. Any way you spell it, you get the same name. But anyway, I was in, there's five, six of us in Rio Robles that got flooded out. And right offhand, the city gave us a permit, which was good. We started having the volunteers, they were coming in, they were working. They got the subfloor up in my house, going back to the revenue floor, and the other ones. And then all of a sudden, it comes up, remodeling is put on hold, because a third party has to look at it, and tell what has to be done. Is the third party, the government, is not the city?
I'm sorry, I don't know the particulars.
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, I don't know the particulars of what you're talking about.
Mayor, we are aware of this, and Drew Paxton and Michael Hornis will get with you, and we can make sure that we get the permit stuff addressed with you, okay? So see this gentleman right here, and he can get you the contact information for him, and we can work with you on the Rio Robles stuff. We are aware of this situation out there.
Appreciate.
I'm glad you're okay.
Thank you, I appreciate it. And it's an honor. I've been in Kerrville 21 years. I love it. I've worked here all 21 years. And real quick story, I started out in Rio Robles, and I did one house, and all of a sudden, there's 106 mobile homes there, and I've done something on every one of them except 10. And people say, well, how'd you get in Rio Robles? I married into it.
There you go.
But anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob. Mr. Peterson. You're next. 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 No, Mr. Peterson, and then you.
Thank you very much. My name is Jack Peterson. I'm a resident of Kerrville. I grew up in a family that my father would call council, family council. My father did go to Tybee High School and graduated in 1936, so it's good coming home. In those family council meetings, we learned about family finances, and how tough it is to get those things you want, as opposed to things that you have to have. When I took the Kerrville Citizens' Government Academy, I was very impressed with city staff, with the city council, the work that y'all do, and the difficult tasks that you have on a normal day. But after a day like July 4th, what you're faced with, should we increase taxes so that we can have the money necessary to meet the local match requirement for funds that will help us build an area to attract new people? Do we continue the growth based on what we will pay for, for the future, or will we hold ourselves back, because the future, we want to keep the future as it has been? I think, in what I have been seeing in Kerrville in the last two months, is astonishing. I am so proud to live here in a community of strength, and Texans standing shoulder to shoulder, and reshaping our community. And I am proud of what we have done, but I see a very bright future for where we're going to go, because we will rebuild better than it's been, we'll have greater opportunity, and we'll have more people able to live here in a quality method. And it all has to do with what I learned today in the budget workshop, is a minor tax increase. Now, granted, for those that are hurting, they're not going to be able. But there's exemptions to be applied for. There are opportunities. We're a community. I don't think that when the Kerrville City Council says, "We need to increase revenue," that it's the enemy talking to us. It's us telling us, "We need to deal with this issue." It's our family. And I'm proud of the work y'all do. I admire everything that you've done to help us get through this disaster, and what, I pray for the future of what you've got to do to face the future. Best of luck to all of you.
My name is Richard Boner, and I'm from East Kerr. But I do a lot of shopping in Kerrville. It's the closest place for me to do all of my shopping. And I've heard some pros and cons here. I think there isn't anybody in this room that owns a vehicle, that their gas bill isn't higher, just like it is for the city. And I understand, all of the expenses go up, on the, all of the city, like the police, the fire department, all of the first responders. That all hits us the same. And so, we don't have the luxury of saying, "Well, we're going to get a 3.5% increase, and during the disaster, we're going to get an 8% increase." If we have the luxury of doing that, I doubt that there's a person in here that would complain about the city or the county, saying they want to go up that, because then it would be on equal terms. So, those are the things, we've heard a lot of good testimony here. And that's just the thing that I believe you need to look at, too. We're hit by that. We're hit by the same thing, and then we're hit again by having to pay more taxes. Sales tax is, affects a person as well as property taxes. So, I just think that's something that needs to be looked at, too. We're hit by that. And anytime a business is taxed, the business is not going to be taxed. What they do is they raise their prices on their products. So we're hit again on that. So the people, and especially the ones that are just starting out, they don't start out at a big salary. So they're really struggling. And the people that were affected by the flood. I didn't try to get money, when I was asked if some of the debris could be hauled onto my property. I was glad, I was honored to be able to help. And I would take things that I had, and deliver it to people. I wasn't looking for fuel money, or for time expenses or something. We had a lot of volunteers that were doing that. So, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Anybody else? Mr. Burudi. I'm sorry, what?
Nothing, I'm just joking.
I just, I wasn't, I wasn't.
I know, I know, I know. I'm just joking, too. George Buridi, 1616 Glen Road. So, while I tend to agree with most of what's being said, I think a lot of what we're doing is kind of getting our eyes off the ball, when we're focusing on property tax. Property tax is a response to what I would consider is the root problem, which is the expansion of government. In the last, since 2019, 2020, I'm sorry, this government has grown, the general fund has expanded by 60%, okay, in like, six years, right? The population, according to the budget numbers that get printed, has expanded by 5%. That, to me, is the problem. The other thing that gets said, Mr. McKenna, you keep bringing it up, and the last speaker, I think, was kind of rebutting it. Government in this city isn't supposed to react to inflation. It's the driver of inflation. So when you raise things, you're raising it everywhere. You're creating inflation. So you all have a difficult position, right? Of course you do. Because you've got a tight budget, which we have all now acknowledged, was in place before the flood. So we got to stop using the flood as the reason for why we're in this mess. The governments are obligated to produce fire protection, police protection, and infrastructure, namely, streets and water. Everything else is discretionary. So fully fund those, and with whatever little bit you may have left over, that's where you go towards parks and all these other things. We aren't supposed to, we're not obligated to make amenities. We want amenities. But you're hearing everybody say, "We don't have enough to put food on the table." It's kind of like, one of them mentioned family, he was mentioning family council. Okay, when I'm raising my son, he wanted a car. I looked at him, I told him, "I'm struggling enough to get you the food and the clothing you're wearing. I can't get you a car." He didn't move to another house, because this was the best deal he had. This is what we got, and this is what we're facing right now. We can't, we cannot continue to add these amenities that we just think we want, think we need, when we really don't. Bare minimum, get these done. The other thing is, someone mentioned about the county going into their fund balance. Yeah, that's a bad idea. They're using the fund balance to fund ongoing expenses. It's no worse than using debt to fund your maintenance and operations, which is what this city has done in the recent past, when we borrowed money, not to build new streets, but to maintain the streets we have. Now, you would argue that, and there'll be an argument about this, but the public safety complex that we're building, I'm sure there's some functionality that's being added, but we're really maintaining what we already had. And we're using a lot of money to do it. I'm not saying we shouldn't have done something like that, but it's another thing, it's similar to going into your fund balance. As far as the amount, well, so these are policy choices that you get to make, or you need to make, that determine what we do in the next agenda item. So I won't discuss the next agenda item until then. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else? All right, it's 7:48. I'm going to close the public hearing. As the council may not remember, we are actually talking about the budget ordinance, and not the tax rate ordinance, which is next. Bryce, do you have anything to add, or?
No, just as a reminder, you know, based off of the state statute, you are, you have to adopt the budget prior to the tax rate. The budget is built off of a 3.5% tax rate. The tax rate discussion will be on the next agenda item.
Thank you. We need a motion, then, to adopt the budget. And then we'll have a roll call vote about the budget. Okay, the first motion will be to approve the ordinance. The second motion, which will not require a roll call, is ratifying the vote to adopt the budget. All right?
I make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2028-18 to adopt the city's budget for the fiscal year, 2026 on first reading.
You misspoke just slightly, it was 2025-18.
It says 2028 on here, though.
Oh, is that right? I'm looking at the screen.
2026. On the paper.
The yellow thing says 28. It's 2025-18, Mike.
Okay, we're good. Everybody good?
Yeah.
2025-18.
We have a motion, and a second, to approve ordinance number 2025-18. Is there any discussion? If not, city secretary will call the roll.
Councilmember Sigerman? Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Herring?
Yes.
Councilmember McKenna?
Yes.
Councilmember Hughes?
Yes.
All right, the second motion, on which a no roll call vote is required. Y'all read that before you, on the screen. Is there a motion to that effect? Is this, this is, we're still in the same ordinance, correct?
Correct.
Yes, sir. So you are still able to lower the tax rate on the next agenda item. This is per state statute, is just saying that whatever tax rate y'all are doing, will generate additional taxes, unless y'all do the no new revenue tax rate.
Got you, thanks. So there's a motion that needs to be made on... So, there's a motion that needs to be made on that. Do you see it in front of you? Don't feel willing to, yes, ma'am. Anyone feel willing to make that motion?
I'll make.
No, you're on a roll. Go for it.
I'll make a motion ratifying the vote to adopt the budget that will require raising more revenue from property taxes than the previous fiscal year.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor, so vote. And it passes unanimously. All right. So, we have, we have dealt with the first reading of six, of 2025-18. We are now moving to item 6B, 2025-19. This is an ordinance levying the ad valorem tax, and please read that in. I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. Ordinance number 2025-19, an ordinance levying an ad valorem property tax for the use and support of the municipal government for the city of Kerrville, Texas, for fiscal year 2026. Proportioning each levy for specific purposes and providing other taxes shall become due and when same shall become delinquent if not paid. There are three citizen speakers signed up. However, this is a public hearing.
Thank you. Mr. Rice, any comments?
Unless y'all have any questions.
All right, so, we're going to have another public hearing. You don't have to have signed up to speak, but we'll start with those who've signed up. Yes, sir?
Can I have one thing to that, please? If you're speaking, please show the respect to the people that are speaking. Don't speak while they're speaking. It's kind of hard for us to hear, too, because we're up here. But Roman, you know what I'm saying, because you sat up here before, too. Be respectful to the ones that have the microphone, because they respect y'all when y'all were up here speaking, too. Thank you.
All right, so, I'm going to open up the public hearing. We will start with those people who've signed up first, but you don't have to have signed up to speak. You ready? I'll open the public hearing at 7:53. Who's the first speaker?
Roger Hall.
Mr. Hall.
I've already spoken.
All right, thank you. I appreciate that, actually. Thank you.
Judy Eichner.
Mayor Eichner.
Good evening. Judy Eichner, 604 Cardinal. I just want to say thank you to you guys. I've sat in your seats. I know what it feels like. We didn't hire you for $25 a meeting. We didn't vote you in to not make hard decisions. That's what you're there for. I appreciate what you're going through. You've heard the good, the bad, the ugly. It's all there, and you guys have the decision to make. It's in your hands ultimately. I'm in the category of a frozen taxes. I didn't vote for that law. I didn't vote for it. I don't think it should be in place, but it is. So, we live with what we've got there. If I had my way, I'd be happy to pay my taxes. I chose this town. It's a great, great place to live, and you've heard that over and over tonight. But ultimately, everything, the final decision is up to you. You're working with the best of the best with the staff that we've got. Absolutely great. They're looking at this. They live here, too. So, they're looking at this from the standpoint of their, of their own lives. So, they're not taking this lightly, and I know you're not either. So, I just want to say, thank you for what you're doing. We voted you in to make the tough decision. You'll make the right tough decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
Terry Hall.
Ms. Hall.
Again, Terry Hall. I just wanted to point out some things on SB 10, since Councilwoman McKenna brought that up. I just find it really curious how you don't understand the grassroots pushback to property tax in the state. It has been an ongoing issue now, where the Texas Legislature has had to weigh in multiple times to buy down property tax rates for people, because this is a massive issue in the state of Texas. And in fact, we're falling behind Florida, Tennessee, other states. People are passing right on over Texas because they're getting it right. You've got Ron DeSantis actually calling his legislature to eliminate property taxes, ahead of Texas, where we can't even get y'all to lower the tax rate, much less eliminate it. So, this is like an on-fire, like top priority, especially for the Republican Party of Texas, which makes me wonder if y'all are even part of the Republican Party. Because if you were sitting where we've been sitting for years on grassroots advocacy, you would know that property tax is one of the top hot-button issues in the state of Texas. That's why the governor had it as an emergency item. That's why he's likely to call a third special session to get this resolved. And we take great umbrage to Dalton Rice going to Austin to lobby against lowering the property taxes one little percent, because it was going to go from three and a half to two and a half at the time. The House made it down to 1%. And he's complaining about that on our time and dime, basically, the taxpayer dime, to lobby against the taxpayers who are so desperately seeking relief on this issue. In fact, there was a massive knock-'em-out, drag-'em-out, just about went to blows on the House floor over this, this conference committee report on SB 10. That's why it failed, because a group of conservatives were so tired and fed up of nothing being done on property taxes. And in fact, the Kerr County and Kerrville wasn't even in the bill, because the original filed bill was, would not even apply to anyone under 75,000. So, 90%, I think it was, of the counties across the state wouldn't even be getting that lower tax relief. So, we had a handful of conservatives that were like, "We're not doing this if you don't include every Texan in this." And that's why it went down. It didn't go down because they're like, "Oh, we're going to listen to the cities and counties, and we're just going to let you all just keep raising taxes on everybody." It went down because they want more and because we're demanding more. So, I think you really, really need to be careful about sending your city manager to Austin to lobby against the taxpayers. That's another one of the eight legislative priorities for the Republican Party of Texas, is to ban taxpayer-funded lobbying. And that's precisely why. It is absolutely wrong to use our tax money to go lobby against the taxpayer, when we are desperately trying to hang on to our houses, and then all these young people who are just trying to get into one and get started in life. And you guys are pushing the working class out of Kerrville, and this is going to be a huge problem. Go talk to Fredericksburg. And what are they going to do on top of that? Oh, they're probably going to do a bunch, a whole bunch of government subsidized housing to solve the problem. But that's not what these young people want. They want the single-family homes. And that's what you used to be able to get in Kerrville, before we started ratcheting up the spending like we've been seeing recently. So, I implore you to please reconsider your position. I don't know if y'all are just like closed feedback loop, you're just like insulated because you're city government, I don't know what it is, but outside this building, property tax is one of the number-one issues. And for everyone under 30, it is absolutely the number-one issue, is cost of living, quality of life issues for these young people. Listen to Charlie Kirk for a change. Listen to Tucker Carlson, Marjorie Taylor Greene, all these members of Congress making a huge stink about this right now. I don't know how you can sit here acting like you don't understand what's happening on, outside these, these walls. Because right now, that is the issue. So, please wake up and smell the grassroots, because we're speaking and we need you to hear us. Thank you so much.
Any other speakers?
No, sir.
Anybody else want to speak? You don't have to sign up to speak. Go ahead, George, please. I'll give you a second.
Still George Buridi, still at 1616 Glen Road. So, I'm just going to read this time a little bit. So, I keep hearing, this bothers me, so I'm going to, I keep hearing that people talking about property taxes are caused by the rising property values. But that's not really how our system works. Okay, in this system, the city or county, you guys, the city, sets the total amount of money it needs to collect in your budget. And then divides the amount among property owners based on the relative value of the property. So, even if property values go up, that doesn't automatically mean the city collects more money. What really determines whether our property taxes go up is whether the city chooses to increase the taxes, the tax revenue, which is what Mr. McKenna keeps trying to push for, right? So, the, so if people are seeing higher tax bills, it's because of one of two things. The city has raised the levy, the revenue, or the property value rose faster for their property than the average around them. So, saying that property taxes are going up because property values increased is misleading. What causes tax increases is policy decisions, specifying specifically decisions to raise the levy beyond what's needed to maintain revenue neutrality. So, the decision to raise the taxes is just really a sign of the, the rapid rate of growth of the government. And I, I would ask that you, that you kind of further clarify that every time you guys discuss it. The other thing, specific to this right now, and this tax rate, is you guys are, I don't know if it's the law or the, or the charter, but you've got to have a balanced budget. You just approved a budget that calls for a certain amount of revenue. And that revenue is not the rate that's in front of you, it's the one that's lower. So, prior to, you're kind of locked into adopting the lower rate until you amend the proposed budget that you just adopted. So, maybe between first and second readings, you could add a plug number, maybe, to the budget? Because right now, I mean, according to what you were saying, I mean, am I incorrect? Your, your budget is calling for a certain amount of revenue.
I'll let you finish, and then I can address.
Okay, so, to be balanced, you know, it'd be that. The other is, if, if it's not in there, or if it is in there, and it's just a random number that we're shooting for, I would argue that that's not really a prudent choice, which is what was the word being tossed around last week, or last meeting, to just blind, you know, kind of blindly accept a rate that collects some revenue, gosh, I hope it's the right amount. I don't really know. I use this example all the time. This is kind of like when I was a kid, when you go to, the ice cream man comes around. And instead of going in saying, "I want the, the bomb pop," you say, "What can I get for this much?" If we're taxing and budgeting that way, then I would argue that you need to get back to the priority setting, which I was discussing in the last item. So, I would consider going with the, the rate that was previously proposed in the original proposal.
I'm sorry, let him go, and then you can go next.
Mayor, real quick on that one, just to kind of address some of, you know, his issues. He brings up an excellent point. Per the state law, we have to adopt the budget prior to the tax rate. So, under normal, you know, circumstances, this is one of those nuances that came out in Senate Bill 2, where if the voters would go to approve a tax rate, that would happen in November under the general election. So, cities are then using, are having to basically build two budgets. A budget on a lower tax rate, and a budget on the increased tax rate once the voter approval rate hits. So, we are able to do that, and there is no issues with that. It would just be a budget amendment on it, because if that tax rate got approved at that right time, then it would adjust the budget, just like it would if the voters voted on it in a November election.
Thank you. Yes, please.
No good to see y'all. Tim Tompkins, T-O-M-P-K-I-N-S. I'm Irish, not English. I live at Guadalupe Plaza, and we got hit hard. I was out there with these young, or these young guys pulling people out of their houses. My 16-year-old son, his brother saw his first dead person. Didn't go over well. That, you know, this is my second national, or natural disaster. I went through Katrina, and I was right in the middle of that, too, pulling and chucking. I saw a thousand body bags. That was really bad. It's 90,000 square miles of devastation. It gutted our country, not just our state, our country. Governor Barber at the time, President Bush, we didn't pay taxes for a year. And when it did come back, it came back at the, at the rate that it was when it was shut off. And the reason why, and it's real simple, people, it's real simple. You've got to rebuild. There's no doubt about it. These little purties you want to do with the town, it's going to have to wait. You've got to get your recovery done. I'm here to tell you. You've got to support your police, your fire department, all that. That's your core, just like my budget. I'd love to go out and eat every night, but you know what? Got to stay home and eat, because my budget isn't that. I got to pay my electric, I got to pay my water, y'all make me. But that's the way it is, the basics. Right now, I went, like I said, I went through Katrina, I saw it. Right now, it's just the recovery part. It's, they're still recovering. It's 20 years later. Granted, it was worse. You've got 20 miles of a river that's tore up. You're going to have to clean it up, because I guarantee you, I ain't getting in that water. And nobody else is going to, that comes in from out of town that you want to spend money here, is going to look at that river and say, "Oh, hell no." Excuse my language. Okay? So, you know, that, that's going to be a pretty item, too. Y'all need to figure that one out. I'm no expert on that, and I'm not going to claim to be, even though I was in the Navy, I still don't know how to swim. But here's the real problem going to come up and bite us all in the butt, not just taxes, insurance. Insurance went clear out of the state of Mississippi overnight after Katrina, and it's going to happen here. Not only did they hit us between the eyes with insurance, they kicked us, y'all went to kick us in the butt with this tax, and I hope and pray that you are smarter than that. Because in the long term, if you pay back, if you do the basics now, I'm a former chief of police, I had to work with Department of Finance Administration when I first got out of the military. Best thing I ever did, because I understand what y'all are going through. Don't get me wrong. We even had a ball, the city attorney, too, then. But y'all got to do the basics first. You don't go doing pretty plans and what it used to be. It's what we've got now. He's right. Y'all got to watch it. I, I'm not going to go into a lot of terms and everything. I could have when I had, you know, I've got to remember what I did. But y'all are doing it wrong. If you are, come on, 8%? Try it out loud. That's a little high, don't you think? Common sense. Thank you for your time.
Of course. You're first. And then, we'll have some more. Again, you'll need to state your name and address for our city for the record, please.
Yeah, I just got a question. Is there no other way outside of doing taxes? No other way?
All right, you have to.
Uh, is, sorry. Is there no other way outside of doing taxes? Is anybody, anybody, anybody here familiar with the story of David?
We have to have your name and city.
Christopher Kerrville.
Christopher.
Tompkins.
Thank you.
That was my dad.
Oh, I didn't realize it. Okay.
I'll put the two together, yeah.
Sorry. Is everybody, anybody here familiar with the story of David Crocker when he was in the Senate?
I'm sorry, no.
He passed a bill to raise money by increasing taxes to help with a relief effort in another state. Person approached him on the street, said, "Hey, you raised my taxes to pay for someone else's. You gave my money to someone else." There was a fire right outside of the Senate. Instead of raising the taxes, what do you, and he went to the Senate and said, "Hey, can I just get some, some of your guys' money, and we'll hand it over to them?" Is there no other way we can do this outside of raising taxes?
Well.
I understand we don't want early touch that for another emergency if it comes up, but.
We will talk about it.
Okay.
Thank you. Who's next?
I'm sorry.
I'm going to let John, and then you again, ma'am, okay?
I'll be quick. John Harrison, 2911 Dry Hollow. Folks, you've got a $39 million general fund. You're talking about the difference here between, you're talking about $330,000 on 39 millions. That's 1%. I got up here earlier and talked about I was dissatisfied with the budget, because you weren't spending enough, because you were unfunding things that you've spent years to fix. Please go with the disaster rate. This is one year. Let's, let's get that $300,000. It'll go back down next year, probably, because things will come back up. But, but let's, let's do what's smart for our city. And I echo Eichner's statement. Y'all got a tough job, but I'm confident you can do it. Thank you very much.
Who's next? Yes, ma'am, please. I'm sorry. Again, you'll have to state your name and city. Again, you'll have to state your name and city.
My name is Mary, my last name is Contois, it's French, I'm not, C-O-N-T-O-I-S, and I live one point seven miles and three miles and all of that, that's, I haven't moved, and I don't want to. I just need to not, I I do not have the words, like this gentleman, I do not have the figures in front of me, there, huh, not quite as many as this gentleman over here. However, I just wanna bring this down to my neighbor's point of view. And when the gentleman, which of you said something about what's happening to our taxes? That was happening before the flood, sir. I was already in difficulty before the flood. I'm on my second roof in two years. My insurance premiums for my house insurance, which doesn't matter what my tax rate is, or what age I am, or what's frozen, or what's frozen, went up a hundred and two dollars a year, and I did tell, was able to tell the county, that's twelve percent of my income, my monthly income. Then, during the flood, but not because of the flood, I got a notice from my insurance company that all my deductibles are going up two percent. So what do I do? Thinking of something else, I back into my garage door, my deductible is two, twenty-five hundred dollars, the garage door is three thousand, I'm not even putting in the claim. But this has to come from somewhere, and it is my rainy day fund, I have one, I wouldn't come here without one. But that is going down so fast, so I want to protect that. But my overall way for, the way I can frame it, are my neighbors. One of my neighbors got declined insurance after the second hail. She's a single mom, has raised her children here, her son died out on Memorial, got hit by a bike, she's struggling. And she got denied insurance because we are Texas with weather patterns, with disasters. So what I did to sit here and not dishonor all of the views here and all of the history here, is what do you do? You have statutes, you have laws, you have tenants. And I've taught this to kids and to high schoolers. And then I ask them the so what? Okay, so those are the law, you have to live by those laws. And then they learn their principles, how do you apply those laws? Where do you apply those laws? When do you make allowances? All those other kinds of things. But the final thing is the practical application and the illustration. So the gentleman were very good at telling you practical applications prior to this disaster, the city was already in trouble. I did not have the exact amount of the sixty percent, but I had seen it from my prior research to what I'm living now. A lot of money's been being spent, and this is before the flood, you had no, no plans or no, no, not the plans. The city had little than their own buildings to take care of in the two last hailstorms, but your citizens did. I had a family that had a private business, all of their commercial vehicles were out in their driveway because they have a residence, and they had to replace them all, they just moved. If you go from the Luba Tybee all the way down to Water Street, you will see the same for sale signs that you saw a year and a half ago. My name's Mary, I live here, I want to keep living here, and I want to be heard.
Thank you. I've lost track of who's next, I'm sorry. Who else wants to speak? Kim, please.
Lynn Clarkson, Curville. You've approved the budget, what you're looking to look at now, the new tax rate. I want you all to know that as a homeowner, I will be paying, if you do this, forty dollars more a year. So from what you've done to what you're talking about doing with the tax rate, I'm an average home payer, if that helps generate three hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, and if that three hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars helps fund the things that don't get funded because the budget doesn't make its ex- its expectation because of sales tax or other reasons, or if it helps to replace an asset that we need, if my forty dollars does that, a capital improvement, if it goes to any of those things, I want you to know that you have my support in me paying forty dollars more in taxes. Thank you.
Anybody else? Oh, uh, let's let Bob, and then you can.
No, you'd have to go up to the podium, sir.
I certainly remember your first name, it's Bob, what's your last name?
Sir, either way you spell it.
Each agenda, I don't.
Now, you know, we have, the six of us down there have a lot to be thankful for, because there was a lives and our homes and, you know, people were wiped out more than we were. But the thing is, um, it's, uh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I, uh, anyway, I'm thankful, oh, I want to thank our police too.
Yes.
Because five-thirty morning, I got banging on the door. I went to the door, he said, you got two minutes to get dressed, let me get you out of here. And he said, anybody else in the house? By that time, my wife walked up, she's shorter than I am, and he said, I'll take her and I'll come back and get you. And there's no way the two of us could walk down there by ourselves. But he took her out, he came back and got me. Time we got out to my driveway, whizzing water chest deep, that's just how fast it came up. If he hadn't been banging on my door, I'd have had water in my bed. We got twenty inches in my, in her house. And and, you know, I don't want anybody to feel pity for me or anything like that, it's just that I love living in Curville.
Yeah.
And it's one of the best places to live, live. Thank you, I won't interrupt.
No, no, you're fine, you're good.
You're fine.
All right, who's next? Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Ian.
Yes, sir, again, my name is Ian Doherty, I live here in Curville, about two blocks away from where the flood happened. By the grace of God, nothing happened to us. It it really was simply grace of God, nothing else. Mr. Harris, I I want to say thank you, you actually look like you're paying attention. Mr. McKinney, you look pissed. And Mr. Herring.
Please be, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Herring, and I'm not saying mayor, but Mr. Herring, the way that you're acting, your body language, hmm, I'm kind of bored. Oh, boy, yeah, okay, yeah, well, whatever. You're not giving these people the respect that they deserve, but you're asking for it yourself. Remember, this is Curville, right? As you said, give Curville and the people here the simple respect. I'm not giving you the respect because you didn't give it to us.
Okay.
You need to do some very simple things, just like a lot of these people around here have said, very simple things. Mrs. Hall said, Mr. Baroudy said, Mr. Tompkins said, and Miss Chebrowe, was it? Contois, Antois, yes, okay, she's not French, you know, all right. But the point is, you'd need to do very simple things. You need to work within what you actually have. Something happened that hasn't happened before, you're going to have to think outside the box, and you're also gonna have to actually tighten up your belts and understand that, yeah, you may want this, you may want that, I want a lot of things, I want a million dollars, doesn't mean I'm gonna get a million dollars. Point being, there are things that need to be taken care of in this city, and y'all are not doing it. Why? Which are you, Abbott or Newsom?
A couple things, let me process some of this. So when we talk about, you know, essential services, and I want to kind of dive back into last year's budget just a little bit, so we did start tightening our belts, that was our, that was my first budget here, haven't been here two years yet. We dropped it down to about four point seven percent, most of that was personnel, which is typically most of the increases that we see. This year, we we got it down to two percent increase, you know, ju- and this is just in the general fund, not citywide. So we increased the budget by two percent this year. So again, we are continuing to to tighten our belts, I think we have listened to the community on that, we've listened to council's directive on that, and and we are working on those essential services. I think it's great that we have a lot of folks here that are, you know, both in the city and out in the county, and and I think that's important to kind of talk about, you know, being Curville, which is the county seat for the county of fifty-five thousand population, it's easy for us to say, we are twenty-five thousand population, and and this is the budget, and this is what we have. But in reality, our service population can be anywhere between sixty to one hundred and twenty thousand as people come in and shop, you know, live outside of the city and also come in and shop in there. So our taxpayers are the ones that are forking up the bill for the roads, you know, for police and fire and EMS. And I ran some numbers, and and we do, I'm gonna caveat this here, we do get some funding for Curville South from the county for fire and EMS services, but we do about twenty-eight percent of our call volume is in the county. So if we talk about tightening our belts, those are some services that we provide mutual aid agreements to our our much-needed volunteers that are out in the county area, and and from a fire perspective, that's a loss, you know, you know, for us. And so we do get some portion of that for Curville South, about one point five million a year, from the county to operate, you know, on Curville South in the county. But for all the other county areas, when we do support those mutual aid agreements, we do have automatic mutual aid agreements that are a a huge benefit that we want to keep providing to that. Of course, you know, the police department, you know, works, works, you know, with the sheriff's department as well, and so, you know, we 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 try to join efforts on that as well. So I think it is important to kind of talk through that we do provide services on a twenty, we are operating on a budget of twenty-five thousand population in a service population that extends well beyond that.
All right, any other speakers? All right, hearing none, I'll close the public hearing at eight twenty-one. All right, counsel, we've heard, we've heard from a lot of people, some of whom actually live in the city of Curville. We've heard from our staff, we've heard from each other as we work through the workshops, this is our, was our fourth budget workshop this year in the midst of, midst of a horrible tragedy. We, um, we have a budget that we have approved that has a certain tax rate. We could adopt a higher tax rate by law, and it would generate three hundred and forty thousand, I think.
Three hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and seventeen.
About three hundred and forty thousand additional revenue, which could be used and segregated out for disaster recovery, if that's what this council wants. One thing the people that I visit with don't understand is, we five don't get together at the coffee shop and talk about this beforehand, I don't know what this vote's gonna be, because we haven't talked about it, this is our first chance to talk about it. And the reason that is, is we don't want to do the public, the people's business in private. We want to talk about it in front of you, okay? And so I don't know how this vote's gonna go, I don't know if it's gonna, I don't know. But I am, I am hoping to hear from the council members how they feel, and then hopefully we'll have a motion and a second, and we'll pass it, uh, this first reading. Now, I don't know what that rate's gonna be, I don't know. But I do know something that some of you do not know, I trust these people, I think they do good work. We, we, we don't get paid really to work here, we don't, we're not on the health insurance, the money doesn't come to us. We're actually just citizens too, we're neighbors too, we don't, we don't make, you know, the same salaries as some of the other elected officials in our community. Oh, they can't hear, I'm sorry. What I'm trying to say is, we do not get together in private, try to figure out what the public's business is. This is our first chance to actually talk about the tax rate. We've talked about it in the past, and we kept our options open, because we had no idea how much the disaster was gonna cost the city. We didn't know, we still don't completely know. And so what I'm hoping will happen is, we'll have a discussion, and then we'll have a motion, either for the tax rate that's envisioned in the budget we just passed on first reading, or a different tax rate, a disaster tax rate. But that's the will of the council, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna let them speak, and I'm gonna put the mayor pro temp on the, on the spot first. Ma'am, do you have anything to say?
Well, this has been one of the toughest decisions in the five years that I've been on council. Although, I mean, I raised four children here, I've got fourteen grandchildren, they all still live here, they still live in this community. And so my decision impacts them. I also am privileged to know, or at least have an idea of the road ahead of us financially. I also am privileged to know the cuts that have already been taken. And so I am going to vote based on the knowledge that I have of what I know our community will not be devastated by, because I don't want to kick a community when it's already down, because I'm in this community too, and we have suffered. So that's, that's all I'll say.
Yeah.
Thank you. I want to make a few comments. I heard it, I heard it a while ago, sitting up here, tax rates won't go back down. Well, by law, if we have, if we pass, if we pass the eight percent, they must come back down in three years, not by our choice, by by law. The other thing about it is, is anybody that was affected by the flood, anybody that had flood damage or a claim is exempt from the eight percent tax, they do not get charged that tax. I'm sorry? I'm one of them, Mr. Doherty, so I'm not arguing that fact with you, I'm one of them, I pay my taxes, there's two council members that do.
We all pay our taxes.
I promise I did pay mine.
I heard it said a lot during our time at the EOC, which was more like a second home. You don't know what you don't know. One thing that I'm having a really hard time wrapping my head around is, we don't know, we don't know the total loss that we're facing, we don't know what it's gonna be. You know, if it's sixty-five million, okay, if it's seventy million, then we're coming out of pocket. I have the very, I'm fortunate that I oversee another bank in another town, and I'm pretty good friends with the mayor down there, and he went through Hurricane Burl one year, this is about one and a half months ago, or one year and one and a half months ago. I had the opportunity to talk to him last week, and we talked about recovery and how they did it. They didn't have any infrastructure, they lost trees, they didn't lose lives like we did. But to hear another person's input on what they did and how they did it. Three hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and seventeen dollars is what we would get if we raised the tax rate to eight percent. It could be looked at again next year, if the value comes back up from taxable property taxes, it comes up, that goes away, we go back to the five-five-nine-five where we're at right now. If it doesn't go, then we get to have this conversation again next year, because it's a three-year deal. It's either three years of tax, but it has to be revisited every time, or once the values come back up. I don't like paying taxes, it's, uh, but I also understand what our taxes do, but all I'm gonna say is, I'm gonna vote my conscience in hearing, in talking to citizens and young people and business owners that affects everything, like Dr. Rector said a while ago, businesses are exempt, not exempt, they pay property taxes. And, you know, we all have businesses or work for businesses, so that's, I'm sorry, sir. Well, if the customers pay it, I pay it, you pay it, you know, it's.
Mr. McKinney.
So what, our, our real problem is inflation and really lowering taxes when, you can't, you can't spend enough bill against inflation. Mr. Rudy thinks City of Curville's part of that, that City of Curville has balanced budget, it's the federal government that spends, that spends money they don't have and devalues our dollar. We.
Do speak up.
Federal government that creates the inflation, twenty-five thousand people in Curville don't impact the inflation, and we're not outspending our money, we have balanced budgets, it's not the same thing as the federal government is driving that. So that's, that's a pretty plain fact. So we have to deal with it, just like we all go to the grocery stores, and we can't, we pay the insurance bills, we pay everything. And as a matter of fact, our tax revenue as a portion of the, um, that, of the evaluations has gone up less than, so tax revenue's gone up less than the valuations have gone up. We've gotten more efficient, we're spending less money, other, well, whatever, anyway, our tax portion of that is less. So our taxes are going down inflation-wise. You know, we can't, we cannot exist any more than you can at home as a city without having some increase, and it has not been up as much as, as, as the inflation. some increase, and it has not been up as much as, as, as the inflation has been. So, we, number one, number two, so we, I think, we were elected to, on, most of us were elected on a campaign to follow the 2050 plan, and to, to build the community, and not to let our services and, and quality of life go down. We're here, you know, we, we've been elected here to do that and not to drive prices down. In fact, property tax, property taxes are not a huge factor in the price of housing. Supply and demand, supply and demand drives, drives that. Because we don't have enough housing, and, and the city council has done a good job of trying to expand the housing base to increase the supply so that the, the, the prices are more reasonable. That's about all, all we, that's about all we can do. We, we're not gonna try to drive the prices of properties down other than by, by trying to get the, the supply up so that we don't have, you know, to meet the demand. As Jeff mentioned, or somebody, the, the damaged property's not gonna be affected by this tax rate. They get, they get released. So, since two thousand and fifteen, our, our city, and in fact, the, the Texas Public Policy Foundation put out, they get, they, they sent me a spreadsheet showing the top ten cities in the, in the state, and nine out of ten, their, their tax revenues were substantially less than the valuation increase. So they're being more, just like us, we're, they're being more efficient, and we have to be, because the three and a half percent cap, when we've gone to inflation higher than that, we haven't been able to keep up with the cost of things. So, we all hate inflation. I hate inflation, it's not, I'm, I'm retired, and I, my, my property taxes won't go up, but everything else is going up, and it's killing me too. But, we, we, we're gonna be responsible for our, our citizens, we have to keep that, we try to at least not fall, fall too far behind. So I'm, I'm certainly in favor of doing the, the five-seven-one-one.
Ms. Sigerman?
Okay.
Have you sure to speak to?
Okay. After much thought, and yes, after talking with many of our citizens, I do get out of the council chambers, I have decided to vote for this tax increase for this disaster is a tool that was created just for times like these, to assist a city through a disaster like this. And I know we can all agree, we have, we are moving forward after experiencing a real disaster. It would be irresponsible, in my opinion, of us to ignore this opportunity, and in the long run, hurtful to our citizens, not to take advantage of this financial assistance. Yes, I'm in the frozen tax bracket, but I didn't vote for that law, and I wouldn't have voted for that law. For as it stands, we lose approximately one point two million dollars of tax revenue every year because of it. However, in doing the math, the difference between this point five-five-seven-nine and point five-seven-one-one to an average household is less than a family of four going out to dinner, or buying tickets to a Tavi football game with all the concessions, or taking in a movie, or playing around a golf at Shriners. So, I personally think that our city, our citizens can absorb this without terrible effects that I've heard tonight, or I wouldn't be voting for this. This only pertains to disaster relief over time. It will hopefully make up for the lost fees from our EMS and our overtime costs to our city. It is temporary, as Councilman Harris said, and maybe not even the full three years that we're after such times, it will be reevaluated to see if it will go back to the normal rate. And either way, in three years, it will. So that's my comments. I'm, I don't feel I'm shaming, being shameful and doing really what is my job. And it is a hard job. I don't, no one likes to present these types of things to anybody. And I, I'm sorry that you feel the way you feel, but I, I would be remiss if I let those feelings affect my decision in a different way. Thank you very much.
All right, we've heard from everyone. What is the will of the council? We'll lead a motion then, and there's a prescribed motion.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty-two-five-dash-nineteen, that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of point five-seven-one-one dollars, which is effectively a seven point nine-eight percent increase in the tax rate.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion?
I want to say, I'm sorry.
Please go ahead, this is discussion.
On the median income household, the taxes would go up forty-five dollars a year. That's on a three hundred and, what was the number?
Sixty-two thousand.
Three hundred and thirty-six thousand dollar home. It'd go up forty-five bucks a year, total. I'm gonna speak, hopefully for the entire council when I say this, because I've lost sleep over this, and I've only been up here for three years, and this is the hardest thing that's been put in front of me. So, please bear with us. Councilmember Sigerman, I, I thank you for what you said. That number, you said it about recouping our EMS costs and our fire costs. Total payout was three hundred and eighty thousand dollars, seven hundred, three hundred and eighty thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars and sixty-six cents. We're gonna get back three hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and seventeen dollars. We're still deficit forty-three thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars and sixty-six cents, even going up, that was at the eight percent, not seven point nine-eight, so.
And that was, was that just in our overtime costs?
Correct. That was just overtime. So, like I said, it's, this is a, I think you started to say it a while ago, Mr. Doherty, this is gonna kick, it's kicking me where it hurts. So it's, anyway, that's it. I'm sorry.
All right, none of us up here have taken this lightly. I don't know how the vote's gonna go. If there's no further discussion, we'll have a roll call.
Councilmember Sigerman? Councilmember Harris?
Oh.
Mayor Herring?
Yes.
Councilmember McKinney?
Yes.
Councilmember Hughes?
Yes.
Passes four-one. We will have a second hearing at our next meeting. Is there, is there another vote that we have to take at this time? Is there?
No, maybe that's.
There's not another prescribed?
Denied.
There'll be a second hearing, a second reading at our next meeting. Please come back, and we'll discuss it again.
No, I'm not.
All right, the next item is six C, ordinance number twenty, twenty-five dash twenty. Will you please?
Ordinance number twenty-two-five-dash-twenty, an ordinance in chapter sixty of the Code of Ordnances, City of Kerrville, Texas zoning code, by changing the zoning of a property known as three zero seven South Lewis Avenue, making up part of Lot Three, Lot Four, Block Four, Westland Edition, and within the city of Kerrville, Kirkemee, Texas.
Uh, excuse me. Move on, please.
Can't hear.
No, it's not. We've got a lot more to go. No, no. You can hang with us for another hour and a half, because that's about what we got.
I'm sorry, do you want to start over, or do you want to just start where you left off?
I'll start where I left off.
There you go.
From a single-family residential with accessory dwelling unit zoning district R one A, to general commercial zoning district C three, and providing other matters related to the subject, we do have one citizen speaker signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
Thank you. Who are we starting with? Mr. Paxton?
Good evening, mayor and council. This is a zone change from R one A to C three at three oh seven South Lewis. This is adjacent to an existing C three lot. It is within the community commercial for the future land use map. Excuse me. So it is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Planning and zoning commission recommended approval at their last, or excuse me, at their August meeting, and the applicant is here if you have any questions specific for them, or I'm happy to answer any before or after the public hearing.
Just one question. On the planning and zoning commission, what was that vote? Was it unanimous, or what was it?
I believe it was unanimous, yes.
I think it was unanimous, all right. Happened to know.
All right, any questions for Mr. Paxton? Any questions for the applicant? Does the applicant wish to speak? Please don't talk about taxes, talk about this item.
You have a joke or something?
Yeah, so, what's your name, sir? Pablo Brinkman, thirty-nine twenty-eight, Oak Park Drive, proud resident of.
Pablo, are you the applicant?
I can do either one. I can be the applicant or the speaker.
Well, if it's an applicant, you're gonna have to open the public hearing. I mean, if it's a citizen speaker.
He's representing the applicant.
Okay.
I don't mind opening the public hearing.
Okay. Whatever Mike makes me happy.
Here we go. I'm gonna open the public hearing at eight forty-one. Pablo, please speak to us, that'd be great.
Come back, Pablo.
Kent, I thought you looked great, they just don't know you. You look happy. You looked happy to me. I, I did, real quickly, what I will say to everyone that's still here, and hopefully those that are listening out there, what I encourage you to do is to pay attention to your home value. Our firm represented eighty-six in four county protesting of the value. So if you pay attention to your values, and you go before Kirkad, you go before, and make sure that your values are being held, you can easily take care of the forty, or forty-two, or forty-six dollars. So, being over sixty-five, ag-exempt, a non-protest does not constitute value. So, we've saved roughly two million dollars in value in our firm's protest.
I was joking about talking about taxes.
Yeah. So what I would encourage you is to, is to do that. So we represent the bank and trust, I guess I'm a citizen speaker.
It's a public hearing, so.
It's a public hearing, so.
We'll have someone that's signed up, I think, correct?
It's me as well.
Okay, good.
I was covering both things, Mayor Herring.
Thank you.
Represent the bank and trust, where the old Sears building was, we, we purchased that, and you can see construction's going along famously. The house contiguous to this that were, have purchased was a condemned house that was not habitable, so the bank has purchased that. We're gonna make it impervious cover. We, before P and Z went through, so everything that we had already had approved on where our dumpster was gonna be, any kind of screening, is just taking that into effect. So we will be demoing the house at some point. We actually had other applicants at P and Z that got up and spoke against it, because they thought it was gonna be a vape shop. When they found out what it was, they reversed, and they actually spoke in favor of it. So, any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Mostly parking, though.
It's just parking, yes, sir. Because of the drivelanes on the, the, our, our banking lanes, drive-through lanes, it's just giving more bailout in a little bit for staff and et cetera, and just giving us a little bit more buffer. So the bank spent the money just for a little bit more buffer to be more of that neighborhood like, instead of just right there up against.
Well, I think we're lucky to have the bank and trust here. They're, I think, Mr. Bowers is doing a great job of reinvesting the deposits here, which a lot of banks, we have plenty of banks, not that many that reinvest, and Mr. Bowers is doing a good job of that. And so certainly glad to have him here, and we want to, I'd like to see, be supported and have a good location there.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And they, yes, sir.
Any questions for the applicant?
Well, that answers my question about the house. I was wondering what was happening with that lot, so.
Yes, yeah, it's, it's not, it's a gentleman ran a landscape business kind of out of there, even though it wasn't neighborhood commercial, but he, he did that, and there's, there's nothing to do but demo it now.
All right.
A comment was made during the meeting earlier, another bank. I think Pablo had a great idea, he just said it. Start the bank and trust, the bank and vape.
We're a little punchy.
Who knows what we'll say from here on out.
We got a chicken, a vape place, a nail salon.
Chicken.
And chicken, that we're doing. We're actually gonna do it right over here, behind.
Where's the church in?
It's, no, it's three stories up, all the things that Kerrville owns.
All right, this is a public hearing. Would anybody else like to speak? Mr. Rudy, please.
I don't know if anybody noticed it, Pablo, but you just cleared the media out. They were real thrilled with what you had to say about taxes, I'm thinking. No, but I, I just had a question. Is this, so what, the lot that we're talking about, is this, well, let me back up. The bank, didn't they get a variance for, maybe it was stacking of the cars in the drive-through? Was that true? So is this gonna alleviate that to some extent, or is it still, I mean, I know you got a variance for.
This has nothing to do with the.
The drive-through?
The queuing that you were talking about? No, sir. This is just, if you, if you look at where that is.
Well, that's my question, so you can, if you gotta get up to answer.
Give me a break, poor guy.
Brian Bowers, the bank and trust, thank you. Great question, Mr. Rudy. So, a couple of things. One is, we want to be a good neighbor to our neighbors there, and that property line is very tight, that house is right on the property line, and so by us acquiring that house, one, it's not livable, it, whoever was gonna build there would need to tear it down. It's going to give us the ability to have more parking, more space back there. We'll plan to do more privacy fencing around there and bring that into our lot. The other thing is, is that parking is tight on that lot, and we have a community center as part of the bank building that we're building, and so we want to be able to have additional parking and things as people in the community use that as events host, that we're not necessarily having to have people park on Lewis Avenue there.
Thank you. Any other speakers during the public hearing? Hearing done? The public hearing is closed at eight forty-seven. Is there a motion then on ordinance twenty?
I'll move to approve the zoning change, ordinance number twenty-two-five-dash-twenty on first reading.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, so vote. And it passes unanimously. Thank you for your patience tonight. All right, seven A, ordinance number twenty-two-five-twenty-one, would you like to read that in for us?
Yes, sir. Ordinance number twenty-two-five-dash-twenty-one, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of seven hundred thousand dollars in principal amount of City of Kerrville, Texas tax note, series twenty-twenty-five, securing the payment thereof by authorizing the levy of an annual ad valorem tax, and approving and authorizing the execution of a paying agent registrar agreement, a purchase letter, and all other instruments and procedures related there too. There are no citizen speakers signed up.
Ms. Barron.
Good evening. So we'll be brief. I know we've discussed this earlier in the workshop, but happy to review any questions. Again, we did solicit bids from every bank who has a storefront in the city Kerrville, and then also some larger banks who we've done business with before. And we received those four bids that we talked about earlier, and by far, the bank and trust came in at two point nine-nine, which is considerably below market, as we are seeing it in through, even through our lease purchase options. So if we have specific questions about this, I don't want to revisit the entire presentation, but happy to answer questions. Again, use of short-term financing like this, even on the debt side, is becoming more and more common. You know, it's just, things are costing more, as we've learned throughout the budget process and, and through looking at inflationary issues and those kind of things, and to stay up with our asset replacement program that we need to, we feel like this is a good recommendation to keep us on track with where we're going. So, we also do have our financial advisor here, so Ann Berger-Entrickin is here, and we'd be happy to answer any market questions or anything specific to the tax notes, if you have those.
Any questions for either Ms. Barron or Ms. Berger-Entrickin?
I think we all have it.
Comment?
Comments, please.
Well, I'm agree with John Harrison. I don't like that we're doing this, but I think it's getting done more and more, just because we bump up against the inflation problem. And, and I know that Mr. Rice is assembling a committee of citizens to give us some outside guidance about what we do with our, our long-term budget issue, and, and where, where we get the money, or how do we address some things. So, so in the meantime, I think that's probably necessary, but we sure like to get in a position where we're not doing this.
We had a comment question. Go ahead, Ms.
This is Chief, I want to ask you the question. Question. Uh, this is Chief. I wanna ask you the question. Um, I've seen some of the vehicles and I know you have at least one. And I know the sheriff's office has at least one. And I know that DPS has gone to some of them as well. But do, do trucks work? Do crew cab trucks work for patrol, which y'all would be using this for? Are they more cost-effective to do something with a truck? Or, oh, I'm not arguing because I know you need vehicles, but.
They're about the same. We, we ordered our first trucks last year, rolled them out. Uh, we will eventually roll them into patrol. What we're trying to do is manage the mileage on our vehicles. Uh, we were, what was happening was we were purchasing vehicles and we were running a hundred thousand miles up on those things in about three years. We've been working on expanding that so we can make it last longer. Uh, I've said this before, it's not the price of the vehicle necessarily, it's the equipment that goes on. It is, is more than what the vehicle costs. So you wanna make that equipment last as long as you can. And that's what our goal is, is to try to get our vehicles uh, to where we can make them last, uh, hopefully up to seven years is, is our goal. I don't know that we'll accomplish that, but that's, that's what our goal is.
I was, I was just asking, because I know at one point in time you couldn't get Tahos.
Yes.
So availability things, uh, so just, just a question, because I know, none of it's cheap. And, uh, for everything that you guys and gals need to operate, but, uh, I totally support.
Price-wise, they're, they're, they're very similar. There's not a lot of difference there.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, thank you, Chief.
All right, any other comments or questions? I would be happy to entertain a motion on this ordinance.
I will make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty-two-five-dash-twenty-twenty, dash twenty-one on first reading.
Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, so vote. Everybody votes, okay.
All ready.
Eight A is resolution number twenty-eight, twenty-two-five. Who is leading up on this? Mr. Hayes.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, you all will recognize this. This is an annual exercise that we lead you through. Um, if adopted, this will approve a rate settlement with Atmos Energy Corporation, which is Atmos Gas, provider of, uh, natural gas for this area. Agenda bill and the resolution recitals provide kind of the history and outline the process. Um, Atmos generally increase, seeks a increase of rates every year. Um, when that occurs, they provide notice to all their cities. And the cities that are a part of the Atmos Cities Steering Committee, they, they, um, meet and they hire representatives, um, economists and attorneys, and they go through it, um, line by line. And then we have a chance to challenge it. And in, since two thousand and seven, the, the parties, the cities, the, the Atmos Cities Steering Committee and Atmos um, have used this informal process that's outside of state law, but we all believe it's more efficient, more timely, and actually, you know, gets, gets us to point B quicker than, um, the legislative process would. Um, for this year, um, Atmos claimed that its cost of service in twenty-twenty-four entitled it to an additional system-wide, um, revenue increase of two-hundred-and-forty-five-point-two million dollars. Um, and so then after applying this process, our consultants analyzed, um, the information, um, met with Atmos, I'm sure, a number of times and negotiated a settlement where Atmos would, would receive instead of the two-hundred-and-forty-five, uh, million-dollar increase, a two-hundred-and-five-million-dollar increase. And this, of course, is spread over Atmos cities that are within this Atmos Cities Steering Committee, uh, area. The effective date for this increase would be October one. Um, we, the Steering Committee, um, for the, um, uh, Atmos Cities Steering Committee and the legal counsel and the both sides recommend approval. Um, let, let me just go over this impact. Impact of a settlement on an average residential, uh, rate is an increase of seven dollars and eighty-three per month, which is a nine-point-two-seven percent increase. Increase for an average commercial usage is twenty-five-point-seventy-three dollars per month, which is a six-point-five-six percent increase. So, um, costs are going up.
Amazing.
I know. I seem to hear that a lot these days. We, we can't contest this. We can't do anything right.
Well, we could. We'd be on our own. And, you know, you can imagine.
Yeah, it's just the.
Some cities do that and they're, they're, the cities the size of Dallas.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
I think it's a, uh, in, in my opinion, um, the Steering Committee does a good job of analyzing the work and, and has done so since about two thousand and seven. So recommend approval.
Not to put too fine a point on this, but this will affect the average home, a greater, a greater amount dollar-wise than the tax rate that we spent.
Two hours discussing.
All right, is there a motion then on this?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-eight-dash-twenty-two-five, even though I.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, so vote, and it passes. I believe that we have made it to the end of our fun-filled agenda. Do we have any items on to, for future agendas?
No, she's ready to go. She was already out the door.
Forgot about the gaggle thing and the journeying thing. I forgot about that. Sorry.
I, I want, I wanna do it.
I know you.
Are there any items for future agendas? Hearing not? I'm adjourned this meeting at eight fifty-seven.